Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. This is the Republic of America's stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
So, before we get going with the agenda. Talking with the planning board attorney for the meeting. She is recommending we go into an executive session for attorney-client privileged communication. Motion made by myself, seconded by, second, Member Villano. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Hold on.
You can use my office if you want, you guys want.
Okay, so you should put that we're maybe off the air for a little bit. All right, I need a motion to come out of attorney-client privilege executive session. Motion made by Member Holmes, seconded by Member Low-Bidir. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. And the motion passes six-zero. No decisions were made, no money was spent. All right, we'll continue with the agenda. Approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Okay, meeting was called to order. We discussed old business, Sevalos. Had a discussion public hearing on Stony Brook Estates, which was then continued to March 6th. Then we had a discussion, public hearing on New York Transco. And then we had a discussion, public hearing on Harlem Valley Homestead. Right, and then the meeting was adjourned at 11:04. Sure we could beat that tonight, let's see. So, any questions on the minutes? Hey, motion accept the minutes made by Member Roman, seconded by Member Sadori. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion adopted, six-zero with one. Okay, so we're gonna have a discussion and then public hearing on Harlem Valley Homestead. So, start with the discussion. Representative from the applicant, please come to the podium.
Good evening, I'm John Watson from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture. Here representing Harlem Valley Homestead for their continued special permit and site plan application for their country and conference center project on Old Forge Road. At the last meeting, there were a few comments that came up that we wanted to address. And the board gave us till August, I'm sorry, to January 30th to respond to any comments that we wanted. So on January 30th, we did make a submission, cover letter with some attachments. I'm not going to go through the whole submission, but there are a couple of things I would like to touch on. One of the things was with air quality. When we were preparing our original EAF parts two and three, we did have our MEP engineers, OLA, out of Hawthorne, do some air emissions calculations prior to us submitting any of the EAF materials to ensure that we checked all the appropriate boxes on the EAF for potential impacts to air, which was question six on part two. After reviewing our EAFs, Town Planner AKRF requested additional information on wood burning appliances. We included that information to the town on the location, the type and frequency of each wood burning device, which is in the EAF part three narrative. Last meeting, there was a question by the board about asking about how much firewood we were going to burn. We should have referred back to that prior work that was done, but we gave an off-the-cup answer. That answer was incorrect. So what we did was, we, now that EAF part three does show all of the numbers that represent how much wood and wood pellets the project proposes to burn annually. And as far as the EAF part three is concerned, part two and three. To hit the moderate to large impact threshold on the EAF, we need to burn 200 cords of wood a year. We are volunteering a commitment to say under 165 cords of wood per year and 8.7 tons of wood pellets per year, which is still under the moderate to large impact threshold. So according to CER guidelines regarding impacts on air, the project will fit clearly in the noticeable impact category, as discussed last week, or two weeks ago. Second thing I'd like to discuss is the viewshed analysis. Reminder to the board and some of the public that the DEC's policy on visual analyses is that we're to look at visual impacts from publicly accessible land and officially designated areas. Specifically not looking at private properties, private homes, or people's lawns. But as part of the trying to be a cooperative applicant, we have listened to the board and some of the neighbors during the process. And we have done some visual analyses from some private properties in addition to public places that we've gotten collaboration from with the your consultants on which would be the best places to take these studies from. So over the course of the project, we've submitted six different visual analyses. The high number of analyses is based on the number of additional requests we've had throughout the process. Also on the visual renderings, it was discussed at the last meeting that there's a code section regarding the screening of parking lots. And it made it sound like we forgot or we missed this code section in your code. That's not the case. This is a section that has been addressed previously in our project. There have been a few back-and-forth memos from AKRF specifically on this issue. Aaron, you want to talk about your screening?
Right, so the issue at hand has to do with the code provision about parking lots with over 10 spaces in the RU or RC zone with providing appropriate buffers to neighboring properties. And we brought this up originally when the project had the little employee parking lot up the road further north, where they were proposing some employee parking next to that event field. We brought that up at that point because that was a new parking lot, over 10 spaces, right up against some neighboring homes. So we had them look at that. I think I looked it up and we did bring that up in like a memo from December of 2020, so a while back.
What section of the code?
Yeah, 14538, I believe.
I can tell you.
Hold on. There we go.
So in response to comments about that code section, we did look at that. And I know the neighbor to our north, our immediate neighbor to the north, Mr. Priest. He talked about at the corner of his property, he could see down into where one of the parking lots was going to be. So we did submit a, another visual analysis that shows additional screening.
Number four, yep.
Along his property line for. Along his property line for the parking area at Farm Corps.
So I think the reason this was brought, we were focusing on that small parking area that was new at the time, and that's why this was flagged at that time. It wasn't really brought up on the existing Farm Corps parking lot, just because it's an existing parking lot. However, the applicant did address it in their most recent submission, that it provided an exhibit showing what they proposed to do to address the Farm Corps parking lot. They're going to add a new 50-foot orchard, they're calling it, of buffer. There's also some hoop houses in that area, they're agricultural buildings that are also providing some screening as well. The issue is the code does say all property lines, right? So, you know, if you're going by the code, they have to provide that buffer along that whole stretch from Old Forge Road East. You know, I think that might be an issue due to the ag land, but I'll let the applicant speak to that more. Right now, they're proposing it. Do you want to pull up the exhibit that was submitted, Ryan?
There is a parking area. I mean, I don't know if it's the same as the parking lot that they're proposing.
Right, there's an existing parking area.
Yes, it's in the same place as the existing parking area, correct.
That has over 10 spaces, in existing.
But we are for the project, we are making it, the parking lot is getting bigger.
Right. All right.
Those are valid issue, and they did work to address it between the last meeting and now.
Is there a document you wanted, someone wanted me to pull up?
If you'd like to, sure.
In that folder?
July 30th submission?
Probably.
A January 30th submission?
KGND Architects, Exhibit B. So this is the, some of the proposed site plan elements over an aerial map. The Farm Corps is at the lower end, where it says Hospitality Hub. The parking lot to the right, that's the, those are, that's the expanded parking lot for the proposed project. There will be some, right now, just north of that, there are a couple of hoop houses there that they're being used for agricultural purposes. There will be additional hoop houses built as the project continues. And the area that we're looking to screen is right up at the top of the screen here. Yep, right there. So as, as the property goes east, there's more and more vegetation along that property lines. But at the front corner of that property line, there is, it's open on our property, and it's open on Mr. Priest's property. And when you're up in that upper corner of his property, you can see down into the parking lot. So in order to stay pure to the definition of that code section, we've provided screening for that area. I didn't have anything else to say on this, Aaron? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. The last section I'd like to discuss about our recent submission is about the SWIP addendum. There were some comments that came up about our SWIP that's prepared for the project. We did prepare a short SWIP addendum that did address some of the, some of the final revisions we've made to our SWIP, which include final soil testing results, more detail on some of the stormwater management practices, as well as additional detail for the cisterns and winter stabilization. So now our SWIP is fully compliant with latest DEC standards and ready for final approval. There were a couple other items, I'm not going to go through them, but you know, the record's clear that what we submitted, and I don't want to take your time to go through a lot of smaller items, but those were the big points we wanted to talk about. Like to turn it over to the board, consultants, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I don't have any comments or questions. We'll go through members of the planning board, and then our consultants. Member Sador, Member Holmes, Member Lobo Deere. Member Roman.
Just a question about your wood furnace submission.
Yes.
You didn't call out specifically which model? And is there only one of each? Or are you using multiples of them to heat the different buildings and structures on site?
There's only one wood boiler.
One central boiler for this stuff is close to the...
Mr. Vitale, you have to get the microphone.
Thank you for your question, and your questions last time.
I thought they did submit specs on it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We, we put in a, we put in a spec sheet, a sample spec sheet, and one central wood boiler would be supplemental heat for buildings close to the Farm Center, but would not be the only source of heat to those buildings.
Yeah, so that boiler is, like, the one central boiler. So all of the cabins will not have their own boilers, they'll just have fireplaces. And there is, in the EAF part three, there's a very detailed list of all the different wood burning units in each of the different buildings.
Okay. Member Vellano, anything further? Okay, thank you. Plainer Warner, we heard from you a bit, and I don't know if you had anything further at this time?
One thing I just want to clear up about remarks last time, I think we talked a little bit about the county letter that we got back. Basically, the issue with the stream corridor overlay and the cabins on the west side of the property, the, just so you're aware, and it's in the code, the stream corridor overlay district measures 150 feet from the edge of the 10-mile river. There's a setback provision for 100 feet for structures. The setback is not 150 feet, it's 100 feet. And the current plan they've shown is complying with that 100-foot setback for the cabins. So the county is asking for them to move cabins outside of the 150-foot buffer. There really isn't a, you know, the district is 150 feet in distance from the stream. That's the buffer that they define in the code, that you define in your code. The setback requirement is 100 feet. So, you know, the county, seeing the previous version, they made the comment, I believe, at that time about that setback, and they adjusted it in that, according to that first comment, to get out of the 100 foot. And now they seem to be, you know, recommending that they move them again. You know, we've been pretty clear on our review that they're complying with that provision of the code, so.
All right, so looking at, it's 145-14, correct?
That's it, yep.
Based on principle, structures shall be located within 100 feet of a water course, and no accessory structure 200 square feet or larger shall be located within 50 feet of a water course.
Right, that's D. So B defines the actual district. Would you go up a little bit?
Right, because there's more to the district than the restriction.
Right. So, again, that's just a comment from the county, they are relying on the board for their own decisions, but that was in their memo.
And I believe when we, at some point, maybe a year ago, there was maybe one or two cabins that had a deck or something that was within 100 feet, and that just got moved back, and then nothing was within 100 feet.
They moved them completely out.
Correct.
Okay. Plainer Warner, anything further? No. Thank you. Plainer Warner. Engineer Berger?
Just want to talk about, I did review the additional SWIP information provided, but I want to point out the original SWIP information provided didn't meet all the code What they did was additional work in the SWIP, which would go toward their actual stormwater permit with the DEC. We're not an MS4, so we don't regulate the stormwater permit. We regulate our own Chapter 65. But the applicant, on their own, in responding to the review from the neighbors, proceeded to further develop their stormwater permit to final design, which is what's needed for their notice of intent, which is the stormwater permit for DEC, which is typically done after secret. So they now have their stormwater report completely finished to the end, where the report they provided previously didn't meet all of our Chapter 65 and standards that were needed to be done.
Thank you. Engineer Berger? Attorney Paladaro?
I have a question for the engineer. After the last meeting, we had talked about any kind of mitigation that could be put on a wood boiler, such as a scrubber or a carbon filter.
Particle filters.
You could, these type of stoves have what's called electrified particle filter, which will basically collect the particles coming out, and they're easily placed on these type of stoves, and they're not uncommon to be used.
Okay.
Is that something additional that...
It's not required by DEC. It's not required, it's not in the specs, but it could be added. It's usually an option that people put on.
Okay. And then I had reached out to the applicant, some of the information from one of the submissions, I couldn't read the maps, and had just asked for them to update them.
Yeah, those are the traffic maps from the traffic engineer?
I think it was the maps attached to the easement.
Yeah, yes, those are from the traffic engineer, yeah.
Right, so, and then there were a few new submissions came in, so we'll continue reviewing.
Yes.
Okay. And that's, that's it? Right? Okay. Plenty more members having heard from our consultants. Does anybody have any further comments or questions at this time? All right, so with that, thank you. We will now continue the public hearing for HVH. Do we have the sign-in sheet? Thank you, Mr. Berger. Okay, so, need a motion to continue the public hearing for Harlan Valley Homestead. Motion made by Member Sador, seconded by Member Lobo Deere. All those in favor continuing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, this public hearing is now continued. We have, three people have signed up, and if you'd like to speak, you can go after these three people who have signed up. First, we have Charles Gottlieb, as before, you have three minutes to speak. I will give you a warning at one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Charles Gottlieb here on behalf of David Ellman and Adam Hayde, both adjacent residents to the project site. You guys have seen me here for now about two years, and I can't begin to underestimate the need for a DEIS here. Now, I think the idea of a DEIS is a little blown out of proportion. It doesn't have to be huge, it can be narrowed down to what are the vital topics, emergency access and flooding, and really air quality after what we've seen with the latest submission. We'd also like the public hearing to be extended. I do believe, because there's a subdivision involved here, if the board does have a negative declaration, there will be a requirement for a subdivision after, or a public hearing after the negative declaration is adopted. But just quickly, it appears as though there's not going to be any research into the flooding of Old Forge Road. How do we raise Old Forge Road to make sure the fire department and first responders can access the property? So if we have to, we can undertake that assessment. Secondly, the air quality information that was provided is simply a pamphlet brochure. There are some calculations that are on the applicant's attorney's letterhead. We would like to see a complete air quality health assessment. We see a lot of numbers, but we don't know what those numbers mean for the public health and for the adjacent residents. I have a submission dated today, just a few things to touch on there. The planning board should look as to whether or not Old Forge Road needs to be widened to 20 feet as a fire apparatus access road under the New York State Fire Code, and also whether the entire road and the dead end at the end need to be compliant with the fire code. There is a reference to two determinations by the code enforcement officer that he has found the project to be compliant with the New York State Fire Code. I cannot find those determinations, they have not come up in FOIL requests. We would like to review those determinations to see if further proceedings with the Department of State have to occur.
One minute.
We've also provided a new letter from the town of Sherman, who is worried about emergency access and flooding, because Mr. Ellman, who is a town of Sherman residence, and also campers in the area, would be affected. I understand there was some back-and-forth about the vegetative buffer there. Our review of the code and of the project is that this project needs area variances because that vegetative buffer is not properly included. So we have formally requested that the code enforcement officer or building inspector review the project, issue a determination about code compliance and whether or not an area variance is needed. This board doesn't have that authority to make that determination, so we've asked that the building inspector do that. Lastly, we went from 10 cords of wood at the last meeting to now we're up to 165 cords and 8.4 tons of pellets. Of course, they're going to say they will limit to that because they know that's an unenforceable provision unless the towns enforcement officers are counting every piece of wood going into the furnace. So very likely, it could go over that 200 cord limit. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, next we have Lynn Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening. You have three minutes.
Lynn Martin Dover Plains on Lime Kiln Road. I've lived in the Harlan Valley for over 25 years now, and it's my home. I do my best to be civically engaged. I have served on the Board of Directors for several conservation organizations and volunteered for many others. I'm also a proud member of the Dover Science Club. I'm employed by Harlan Valley Homestead as their managing director, and I have been since 2018. My background is in hospitality, and I've managed small resorts and hotels across the nation, some in extremely remote places. I understand hospitality, and it's much more than just a nice room or a great meal. It's also about community and service. Every week, I deliver fresh farm produce, meat, and eggs from our farm to the Center of Compassion to help families here in Dover. Last year alone, we donated almost $4,000 worth of food to the Center of Compassion. I look forward to it every week, and it's one of the many reasons I love my job. I'm also in charge of human resources at HVH. For the future, we're gearing up to hire over 70 employees. These jobs include hospitality, culinary, maintenance, educational programming, and more. These are good jobs with career tracks and benefits, and of course, we aim to hire local. I think it's also important to note that I'm licensed by the New York DEC as a wildlife rehabilitator and falconer, both for about 15 years. I'm the person local people call to assist with injured wildlife, and I've taken multiple calls from our residents here in Dover over the years. My love and commitment to the environment and wildlife is who I am. I would not work for an organization for any amount of money if I thought they were harming the wildlife or the environment. This town deserves an employer like HVH. We deserve projects that bring in not just tax revenue, but good places for our kids to work and grow, and have a great career that doesn't mean having to leave town. This moment is what defines our town's future, and quite frankly, it defines mine too, and the future of many other employees at HVH.
One minute.
If this project doesn't go through, these jobs and this job that I love will be gone, and that will be heartbreaking on many levels. But I also think about the loss to all the people who will never have had the opportunity to learn and work that land and fall in love with our beautiful valley. I grew up in a small town in rural Wisconsin. I watched all of the dairy farms disappear one by one, along with the livelihood of all those families. We didn't have ag rituism back then, but we do now, and we have an opportunity here to keep farming, which is the very heart and landscape of this community alive. The Harlan Valley Homestead plans to do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Nagata.
Hi.
Evening.
I'm Lynn Nagata. I live on Dogtail Corners Road. I've been there 33 years. My property faces Harlan Valley Homestead. I go out in the spring and the summer and listen to the cows in the morning, and I really enjoy that. I grew up on a farm, working on a farm, right up until college. It taught me more than I can even say here. What I do know about Harlan Valley Homestead is that they have given to the community, like Lynn said, they've helped me in fundraisers I've had, they will help the community with jobs. I just think it's a wonderful idea to get people involved in sustainability, learning how things are grown, learn how things are done. Just the opportunity to have something in the area like this is a positive. I do emphasize with the neighbors, because things change. It's been purchased, it's somebody else's property, and if they are following the rules, then that is their prerogative to do what they would like. And I think what they would like is a fantastic idea. And I will have a clear view of it, and I, it does not bother me, I think it's wonderful. Again, with all that being said, I just, I just think I... That's pretty much, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, I guess that's all the Lyns. There's other Lyns here. All right, that's it for the list. Anyone else who'd like to speak, please come to the podium, just state your name.
Hi, Kim Hayde, Old Forge Road. As you know, this small corner of Wingdale is zoned rural residential, resource conservation, ag, aquifer overlay, stream corridor overlay, and flood plain. Restrictive zoning was intentionally put here by your predecessors to ensure its protection. I believe they'd be saddened to learn that the highest density use special permit, a conference center, is being entertained. If you look at the town code for conference center, it's very clear where it was intended to be allowed: on a large parcel with very concentrated development, far from public and residential view, and where no impact would be made, which is an impossibility with the sprawling proposed plan. Even if this passes SECR, it should not pass town code review. Our town code 145-63 has 12 requirements, different than SECR, that must be met for a major project. More than half of these cannot be met, I'm just going to go through a few of them. Will not result in excessive off-premise noise, dust, odors, waste, glare, or create any public or private nuisances. That's impossible to meet. Project does all the above. Will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads. Impossible to meet with 200 cars coming and going when they have these vettings on any given day. Will not material degrade any watercourse ecosystem or endanger the water quality of an aquifer. Impossible to meet. Ecosystems are negatively impacted by people, noise, smoke, buildings, cars, and odors. Even from converting this property to a residence to a farm, which they can do by right, has significantly impacted the ecosystem already. The number, the lack of wildlife, you know, that we see now is substantial. So when you add 200 or 30,240 people that they say are going to come to this project yearly. Will be consistent with the goal of concentrating retail uses in hamlets and buffering non-residential uses that are incompatible with residential use. This does not meet. They're proposing a conference center on a rural road between residents without appropriate buffers. Will comply with applicable site plan criteria in 145-65. This is all the parking lots, the screening, there's other, that is not an existing parking lot that's there right now. Rarely is there a car ever there. There's a whole nother parking lot they're proposing up on the hill as you approach that doesn't currently show any screening. Project won't have no greater off-site impact than with full development of the property. With 30,240 people coming a year, you can't say that to be a residential location that this wouldn't have the same amount of impact. And the last one, will be accessible to fire, police, and emergency vehicles. The plan's not satisfactory to our fire department, so I don't see how it could possibly meet this site plan criteria. Again, the very clear written intention of the code to allow development where appropriate, but not at the expense of all else. Much like the Transco review, as an observer, the review gives the impression of an offensive approach on how to get a project past code, last sentence, and not a defensive one that would ensure a thorough and careful review. Taking a protective position to the town code is how communities with good character have built and kept it. I ask that you please keep that in mind as you continue your reviews. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else approaching the podium? That would be the time.
Hi, I'm Jill Fieldstein, I'm from Dover Plains. I am reading a letter from Evan Van Hook, neighbor of Harlan Valley Homestead, who is not able to make it here tonight.
One second. We've addressed this before, about people reading letters from other people.
You can't.
Attorney Polidaro.
I mean, it's okay if that's what she wants her public comment to be, although he's not here to confirm or deny that.
It was an email that we all received, I believe, right? Actually, I guess what I'm thinking of is that it was, oh, somebody, that was it, someone, sorry, it was someone who spoke at a public hearing and then.
All right, we don't let people feed their time, but.
If you'd like to spend your three minutes reading this letter without objection, please go ahead. Three minutes.
I would like to start by thanking the board for its exemplary review of projects proposed for the Town of Dover. The State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, is designed for complete review of proposed projects by the lead agency, assisted by other involved agencies, the towns, and the proponents' experts, and public input prior to implementation. Based on my understanding of the record, the board has admirably fulfilled this obligation with respect to HVH, and the time has come to close the public hearing, make a SECR determination, and move the process forward. I believe that HVH will be good for the town and for the environment. The principal signifier of this is that, in my understanding, HVH will offer experiences to guests grounded in protecting nature through open space and sustainable farming techniques. This purpose will depend on ensuring that its environment is protected and that it can demonstrate its environmental stewardship. There are few better assurances of an organization's good practices than that its existence literally depends on them. I believe this assumption is borne out by the numerous studies HVH has submitted, the many approvals HVH has received from involved agencies, and by HVH's willingness to modify its project over time in response to the board's and others' suggestions. It is also borne out by the town's documented support for agritourism and farmland preservation. While the economic benefits of this project for the town appear to be substantial, my own and SECR's focus is on its compatibility with environmental protection, and your review has satisfied me in that regard.
One minute.
Again, in my view, the board has done an exemplary job ensuring this project will help to protect this unique and beautiful area. I would suggest that the time has come to close the public hearing and allow this project to move forward. Evan Van Hook, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, I'm Roger Erickson. I live directly across from the project. As a number of people have mentioned that they do also. I understand the enthusiasm that people that have spoken tonight and at other times have for this project. In the early stages of it, I felt very much the same way. Just too many things happened along the way that showed that, yes, their goal may be something that would have good effects with the town, but the way that it went about, they were blasting and moving stone around right from the beginning as if this was a done deal. And everything that I heard at first turned out not to be what was going to happen. It was going to be, it was going to be this. Something that, it is a very remote, beautiful area with an extremely low population, and to suddenly have it become one of the most populated places in the town, I just don't get it, as to how it makes sense, or that any of the things line up, you know, in a way that it could get by without a complete DEIS. It just doesn't make sense to me. I really would like you to reconsider and go. It seems like it's already a done deal also, because why is it posted that, you know, a draft of a negative declaration has already been on the site for a couple of weeks now? It doesn't seem like that it's really open for discussion now, it sounds like it's already over. Is that normal? I don't know, I'm asking that question. Is that normal?
So, we try to post documents as we can. Anything that is publicly available is, I'm not going to eat up your time with this, but, you know, whatever's publicly available is posted to the website, you know, as soon as the planning board secretary can post them. Again, so this is something that the planning board was reviewing at the previous meeting, so it was appropriate to post it to the town website, so people who couldn't make the meeting could see, you know, what was being discussed.
But why was it a negative declaration and not a, you know, a form that was going to decide which way it was going to go? It seems like it was already written in stone that it was going to happen.
Well, again, it's a form that is filled out, that's part two of the EAF. Our attorney could answer more fully about.
Sure. I mean, the board's been reviewing this for some time, and based on comments that we heard and the review memos that were prepared, a negative declaration was drafted. Under New York State law, we're required to post drafts that are going to be discussed at the board meeting, and so that's why the draft was posted, because the board was going to discuss it. It does not mean that the board is obligated to vote on it or adopt it, it's just simply a way to let the public see what the board has before it.
And that it's likely going to happen no matter what. It's just that there seems to be no way around that. This is a special permit that's being decided, is the basis of this whole thing. Without that special permit, they cannot become this megalithic conference center, as other people have said, that this is a huge thing that's happening, it's not little. And what happens if this fad goes its way and the owners want to get rid of it? Does that special permit go to the next people that own that land?
So, special permits run with the land, and the only reason that the planning board can even consider a special permit is because the town board at one point decided that this was a permitted use in the district so long as certain requirements could be met. And so, special permit doesn't mean anything other than the planning board has to take a good look at it. It means that someone decided this was an appropriate place for a use like this, and, you know.
Not as of right, so it needs to go through a process.
Right, it needs to go through a process. It's not like building a single-family home, which the planning board doesn't review. So, I mean, I guess I'm giving unsolicited advice, but just for everyone in the room, the planning board is obligated to review every application that comes before it. It can't just say, "No, we don't like this idea." It must go through the process, and it actually must approve an application if the application meets the criteria in the code. It doesn't mean the planning board likes the project, it doesn't mean the planning board dislikes the project. The planning board's only role is to consider whether something that's presented to it meets the code that was adopted by a whole different body of the town.
But does, do they get to transfer?
Yes.
Yes, whoever owns that property.
Permits run with the land. And so, the conditions, if it's approved, any conditions placed on it would also run with the land.
I think there's going to be a lot of people upset with this being in the town. I realize this, with this being juxtaposed with the whole thing going on with Transco, it seems like this is a big nothing. It's not nothing to me, and the idea of that much wood being burned, I mean, I've had to stop burning wood myself, because I can't really handle it, but that's not even the point. When people burned wood religiously near neighbors, there were very few, most of them were just weekenders anyway, but when one of them moved up, that smoke would settle in the valley. This is from one wood burner, a constant wood burner, would settle in that little river valley and not budge. And I think that this is way being underestimated, and I reinforce the idea that there has to be a draft environmental integrity statement made.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erickson. All right, anyone else? Please approach the podium.
Hi, Adam Hayde from Old Forge Road. Ryan, do you have the?
Uh, yeah.
No, I have to go to my.
You're just, you're going into your email, right?
Yeah, I have to go to my email, because we couldn't download it.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. In the meantime, can I?
Just hold on one moment.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hayde, just before you begin your three minutes, your video is three minutes 17 seconds, so are you planning on talking over the video?
I was going to talk, yeah, I'm going to talk, I'll just talk over the video, and I've kind of changed everything I was going to say, just based on some of the comments and responses tonight, so I'm going to wing it. But I think it's important that you see the video. I'd also like just to point out that everybody should know that CAC member Evan Van Hook, he's the one who introduced them to the property.
You have three minutes, and the video's wrong.
They are billionaires, and he introduced them to the property. This is the project, right? This is from the beginning? Not one building permit was given for all of this road work, except for that area there. That was a blasting permit in the middle of wetlands, and also in a designated bog turtle area.
This is the farm, though?
This is the farm. This is the farm that you're seeing without one permit. This was supposed to be agricultural use. And when I contacted the town and the CAC members, I was told that Josh was looking to improve muddy lanes for the tractor. That area here, that's the River Cabin Road. This is the road, okay? So when they say that they can't move it outside of the buffer zone, and which it was, by the way, twice, the county came back and said 150 feet out of the buffer zone. And they say they can't move it? That road was never existing. Only on their plans afterwards did they actually have the nerve to put existing road in their plans. It is absolutely unbelievable that they are, the history behind what they have done to this property, and the conniving that has happened up to the point, is just mind-boggling. I'm going to show you one more thing if I could. This is them reaching over for the cabins, this is pulling out areas used for the cabins. When they moved that outside of the 100 feet, they moved a deck outside of the 100 feet. Why can't they put the cabins on the other side of the road and satisfy the county? I mean, isn't that what we're supposed to do? This is a greenway compact community. They made a commitment, our town, to make sure that they comply with greenway compact, as a greenway compact community, and they can't move it outside of 150-foot buffer? I mean.
One minute.
This right here, this is their mistake. This September 6th is when they discharged into the river. Someone asked how careful they'd been, they discharged into the river, it was an accident, and Josh had to come back and say, "I'm sorry," but these things happen. This happens when you're sloppy, okay? So they've already been in trouble, they got a stop worker order, they got a cease and desist, they got in trouble by both the Army Corps and the DEC, and we're trusting them? This is the Appalachian View, okay? That's the view, okay? That's a video, that's not a still picture. So when planners say it doesn't impact, it impacts. This is the road. This is the road that floods over, you'll see right here, there's no access in and out. When the fire department and the Sherman, and the Town of Sherman says, "Hey, you want this project? Then figure a way around this?" They should be taken seriously. It shouldn't be argued that it's not important by our planner and they actually go around and get the code enforcer here. This is a fire, okay? Is this a fire ring, or is there a fire pit? I don't know what a fire ring is. I don't know what a fire pit is. Fire pits are usually dug in, so the fire is contained. They have seven fire rings, they don't even tell us where it's going to be. Is it in my backyard? Am I going to see it? Am I in danger of a fire? Because they already said, the fire company already said, they're worried about being able to get to me, all right? So this isn't about farms, I love farms. This is about the conference center and breaking the rules. That's the last. That's the last fire that they have. So I'd like to know a little bit more what kind of studies they plan to do about these fires. There's nothing as we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. All right. Please just state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Michelle Ishikawa. I live on Carlson Road.
I'm sorry, if you could just, Michelle?
Ishikawa. I'm here tonight to voice my support of the Harlem Valley Homestead project. It's clear to me, you know, having reviewed their project, that the proposed project adds significant cultural value, jobs, and tax revenue to the community. As a proud newer resident of the town and one dedicated to living here long-term, having bought our forever home, it's already been clear to me that HVH is a Center for Gathering, Community Outreach, Agriculture, Agricultural, and Environmental Education, and that their plans for growth will positively impact our community and provide opportunities that we would currently need to leave town to find. Having a place to gather, break bread, exchange ideas with my neighbors and the greater community at large is something I'm personally looking for in my life. And I just, you know, this is my first time meeting some people in the community and seeing the board, so hi, everyone. It's clear to me that there's a lot of passion in the community, and I think that's really a good thing. You know, I hope that we can reach some common ground in seeing this project move forward. I understand it's been open for five years, which seems like quite a long time, although clearly there are things that are important that are being discussed. But I am here to urge the board to close the project so that we can see it move forward. And I hope that, as a community, we can find a common ground for it to move forward in a way that makes everyone happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, my name is Chloe Jackson. I'm a Pauling resident. A few years ago, a couple of years ago, I spoke here on behalf of Harlem Valley Homestead.
Excuse me, could you speak up? I can't hear you.
Sorry. A few years ago, I was here speaking on behalf of Harlem Valley Homestead. I just finished up a culinary apprenticeship there. That's definitely something that I didn't really see being available to me in this neck of the woods. And I have definitely used that to help me get to where I am today, work-wise while still going to school. But I managed to find a position at a Michelin star restaurant, and I used the culinary background that they gave me to definitely help me get that position. So that's just one example of a job that they have helped secure before they have officially got, you know, the okay to continue with their project. Besides that, last time, I kind of touched base on the community that they provided. Again, really unprecedented to be able to do, have a safe space regardless of, you know, your ethnic background, anything that might make you stand out in a, you know, predominantly white community. They even sheltered, you know, enough of a safe space at the local farmer's market for a resident to bring herself there for the first time since living there for about 15 years. So that was definitely noteworthy. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sam Obey, a resident of Dover. But I'll be reading this letter on behalf of Mark Kirby, who could not be here.
Sam, I'm sorry, Sam, Sam was it?
Sam.
Last name?
O-B-E-Y is how it's spelled.
O-B-E-Y, okay.
Dear Dover Planning Board, I write as a property owner in the small part of Armenia that pays the school taxes to Dover Union, as a longtime customer and supporter of the Harlem Valley Homestead, and as a citizen who has been closely involved in planning and zoning issues in Fairfield County, Connecticut for a number of years. This is my second letter to the board on this matter. In my first dated October 2021, I expressed my enthusiastic endorsement of Harlem Valley Homestead project and my conviction that it will be an economic boon, not just for the town of Dover, but for the entire region. I won't rehash those arguments, as I know they've been presented many times to many people. I urged the board at that time to work expeditiously with the applicant to move the project forward. After that letter, I understand that the HVH has made a number of amendments to their project to address the concerns of the town, landing on a current proposal that is about 40% the scale of the original. Given that this project meets the requirement for a special permit as outlined in the town code, will provide upwards of 70 jobs to area residents, and received no impact reviews from relevant county and state agencies, I fully expected that the board would have made its SEQR determination and issued permits by now. So I was surprised last week to learn that the public hearing on this matter is still open, especially given my prior experience in Connecticut, where special public, special permit public hearings are required to be held within 65 days of receiving an application and closed within 30 days of opening. What I see in reviewing the correspondence on file is a classic case where a small group of well-funded opponents to a project put their own self-interests ahead of the neighbors, throw out a variety of specious arguments, and end up costing a town time and money. They do this in the name of misguided belief that they have a fundamental right to the preservation of their property values, even though, one, a project like HVH is certainly property value enhancing relative to other alternatives at this site, such as standard sub-housing division.
You have one minute.
And, two, in our free nation, property value is determined by the market, not the government. And actions like the ones taken in cases like this are elitist and exploitative, in that they expect a town's entire base of taxpayers to suffer at the expense of a vocal well-heeled view. I was amused to see that one of the neighbors in this case seems to have gone so far as to demand self-interest supervision to the town's comprehensive plan that essentially just restates the role of effective planning, respect for adjacent parcels, buffers, et cetera, the requirements for which are already laid out on the town's special permit language and have been already met by Harlem Valley Homestead. Frankly, having seen many of these situations wind up in litigation in much less than five years' time, I sincerely believe that HVH has been on the far, far side of what the law requires in their accommodations to neighbors and the planning board. Now's the time to say yes to this extremely patient and accommodating applicant, while it remains a win-win opportunity. I have the utmost respect for the planning board and the hard work, and often thankless work that you do on behalf of all of Dover's taxpayers. This project is an obvious win for Dover, meets legal requirements for a special permit, and has had all the relevant reviews for a negative SEQR determination. I hope you will close the hearing and move the project forward this evening. Mark Kirby.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else looking to speak at this public hearing for Harlem Valley Homestead? Please come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one approaching the podium, all right, members of the Planning Board, we can continue this public meeting, public hearing, we can close this public hearing, we can close this public hearing, leave it open for written comments.
The applicant, the opposition neighbor attorney, Mr. Gottlieb, raised an issue about closing the public hearing on the subdivision. I believe he was referencing an isolated case from a different part of New York. I think it's called a case from Liberty, where in that particular case, the court said you have to have a hearing after you finish seeker process. So if the board, again, that's not necessarily applicable here in this part of New York State, be that as it may, if the board is inclined to close the hearing tonight and leave a public comment session open, I'm going to recommend that you close it on site plan, special permit, and leave it open on subdivision only, so that, you know, there's no procedural defect that can be claimed later on.
Okay.
Most of the substantive comments that you've been hearing are on site plan and special permit.
Just a quick clarification. It's a re-subdivision, which is treated differently under your code than a subdivision. But I understand, I'm not objecting to what you're saying. It's very important. It is actually not a subdivision.
It's a lot-line alteration.
It's a lot-line alteration between two lots.
I 100% understand what it is.
New York State law still requires to have a?
It's not New York State law. It's a case from the Third Department, which Dover is not.
My question was, does New York State law require a public hearing for any sort of subdivision?
Yes, we still have to have a public hearing for the re-subdivision. So we're following the regular subdivision procedure.
Okay.
One other last point of fact, not trying to interfere with where you're heading. We, our notices all were for all those approvals, by the way, that all went out.
Right.
So this has been an open public hearing for the site plan, the special permit, and the re-subdivision lot-line alteration since the very first one six times ago. Just to clarify, I'm not trying to interfere.
Yeah, what I was.
Yes, what were you saying?
What I was suggesting, given that the public hearing has been on all three, was if you are inclined to close the public hearing tonight on any portion of it, you can close the public hearing on one portion while keeping it over open on another. That's all. Just giving you an option.
To what date would we keep this public hearing open to for simply subdivision?
March 6th, the next meeting.
But again, why does, I'm still, I guess I'm not 100% clear as to why it would need to be kept open.
There, this particular case.
Yeah.
Took the position that under that town zoning law and under the enabling statute of state law, the definition of a complete application included completion of seeker, so that the application wasn't technically complete until seeker had been completed.
Okay.
Here, the public hearing and seeker have been going hand in hand, so the fact pattern is a little different. However, you know, to avoid any doubt, closing the public hearing on subdivision after seeker's been completed is the best course of action.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we close the other part of the public hearing.
Okay. Leave it open for any further written comments, or no?
Yeah.
I'm asking what your motion is.
Oh, I mean, leave this open for, I think the public comments have been ongoing for a very long time.
Okay.
So.
Or close the site plan slash special permit is what?
You've made a motion to close the public hearing tonight for site plan, special permit, leave it open on subdivision till our meeting on March 6th.
Okay.
But then leaving, then allowing for written comments on the first two pieces until next week sometime, or no?
I don't really frankly see the point in that, because, as I said, it's been open for a very long time, and we've heard the same.
Okay.
Comments repeatedly.
All right. So your motion is to close the public hearing for special permit and site plan approval, leaving it open for subdivision to March 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the Planning Board can hear from the public. Motion made by Member Labordear, seconded by Member Ramon. Discussion. Okay. So I just want to make it perfectly clear that the vote would be that we close the public hearing on those two pieces, no further written comments on those two pieces. People can still send in letters presumably about only subdivision. There will be a public hearing on only subdivision on March 6th.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Secretary, please call the rule.
Chairman Corteen.
Aye.
Holmes.
Aye.
Robert Deere.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Sidor.
Aye.
Valano.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes 6-0 with one absence. So, public hearing is now closed on site plan and special permit, and remains open to March 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as planning work can be heard, I'm sorry, the public can be heard for subdivision.
Subdivision.
Okay. Now, let's go back to the Harlem Valley Homestead project. Last meeting, we were going through the draft negative declaration. We completed going through the draft negative declaration. I want to see if any members of the Planning Board have any further comments, thoughts on the draft negative declaration? See if that's not it. It's 10 pages long. I'm not going to go through each item again. But if there are any items that anyone would like to bring up, that would be the time.
So, actually, I have a question.
Member Valano.
I think, Victoria, more for you. So since the fire chief wrote his letter about the road not to his liking, and the town highway superintendent and Joe agree that they can do it, and Don Anderson is the authority in this town, the way our state rules work, so hypothetically, is the town on the hook if there isn't an incident? Once we approve it, and there is an incident, emergency, fire can't get through?
That sounds like perhaps a discussion for attorney-client.
Well, it's an interesting question.
But I will, I will just say there's a general concept called qualified immunity, which a community acting when it's reviewing applications is not held responsible for things that occur from review of that project. Of course, sometimes there are exceptions for gross negligence, or I'm sure there are plenty of exceptions.
I'm not asking us individually, I'm asking the town as a whole responsible, since they approved it, even with statements by the fire department or whatnot. I'm just, I just want to be clear.
If I could jump in on that, they're referencing NFPA for the road, which does not control existing town roads. NFPA is more for new construction or for projects that are new. So the reference of making the road meet NFPA 20 feet wide or flood-proof is not relevant in this situation. The town did consult with Cornell Local Roads to find out, because they're the authority on small-town roads, and they're the ones who concurred with us on that.
Okay.
So Don and I, we spent a lot of time researching this and looking it over before we made my recommendation to Don, before Don made his decision. So this is, keep in mind, this is an existing town road.
Understood.
Not a brand-new road that we're dealing with.
Okay. Thank you, Engineer Berger.
I can brief this issue for the board if the board wants a memo.
Attorney Paula Darrow is saying she could brief this issue for the members of the Planning Board as our attorney.
If requested.
No, I'm good with the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, process question for our planner and/or our attorney. We have reviewed the part two of a negative, oh, I'm sorry, part two of the full environmental assessment form. And without any members of the Planning Board saying they'd like to go back and look at a piece of it, I believe the Planning Board is satisfied without yet voting on a part two. Do we need to vote on part two? Do we need to then read part three, vote on part three? Just looking at the process.
We didn't really read part?
Yeah. I mean, there is a part three report that's like 40 pages long.
Right.
That the negative declaration refers to, and the intent was for that report to be attached to the back of the negative declaration, so that it serves as the reasoned elaboration on that determination of significance, if that's the way the board is going to go. Yeah, the part two guides what goes into the part three.
Mm-hmm.
So in this case, there was a part three and a part two that were prepared simultaneously. There were some revisions to the part two over time, as far as the answers. Regardless, the applicant and us reviewing this report and editing it several times, they covered every topic, regardless if it was a no or small or moderate to large, anything that, you know, even if it was a no or small, they wanted to elaborate on. And we reviewed that text and made some edits to it, you know, in the voice of the board for your review. So the next step is for the, to move on to part three. And if you're in agreement with what the report is saying, and you're moving towards a negative declaration, then you adopt the negative declaration. There's no really reason to vote on a part two.
Okay.
It's more of the determination of significance gets voted on, which is part three.
Okay. Is there any, Paula Darrow? Further?
No, I was just going to confirm that you, I mean, you could. No, I was just going to confirm that you, I mean, you could ask everyone if Part II is complete, but you don't have to vote on them separately.
Okay. Is there any objection to Part II being deemed complete? There ain't no objection. All right, so, Part III. Attorney Paula Darrow, how would you suggest we proceed without everyone watching me read a 39-page document at this time?
Well, all of these materials have been provided to the board. They've also been posted to the website.
Yes.
So, the members could indicate that they've read through it and they're familiar with it, and they have no other questions or comments in lieu of you reading each and every word.
Mm-hmm.
Or you could go through and summarize...
Okay.
...each section.
All right, well, so again, this is going to be the planning board's document that we are being asked to vote on. We'll just go section by section, see if there's anything that anyone feels needs any further clarification or editing or what have you. 1.0 introduction. Any comments, questions, addendums? Okay, Part II and the existing conditions. Anything on Part II, existing conditions? All right. Part III, proposed action and development program. Anything from the bottom of Page 2? Top of Page 3? Okay, this continues on to the next page. Bottom Page 4. All right, top of Page 5. Okay, on to Page 7, 4.0, potential project impacts. Anything on the beginning?
Can I just explain how this is structured? So each one of these topics, but this is right out of the Part II, right? So this is impact on land. Each section starts with, these are the backup materials that were used to rely on this elaboration, so they listed the plan set, various iterations, erosion sentiment control in this case too. And then they go into the small letters like E, if you look at back to the report.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed action may involve construction and continues for more than one year in multiple phases. That was the answer based on last discussion that was moderate to large because there is going to be construction more than one year. So this serves as the reasoning for no impacts or they will be minimized to the maximum extent practicable with erosion sentiment control and SWIP. That's what this section is describing, the SWIP and erosion sentiment controls that your engineer has reviewed with them over several years.
Okay, so based on something one of you said earlier, they didn't need to necessarily write anything if there was going to be a no or small.
Usually, right, usually the only reason to add, to write supporting texts is for a moderate to large.
Okay.
But they chose to, in that, in this case, E was moderate to large, so we have E elaborated on in this section.
Okay.
In some other areas, they even elaborated on no or small, just based on interest from the public, from the board, overtime.
Sure. Okay, so, number one, impact on land. Anything on impact on land leading up to letter E? All right, anything on letter E, proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases? Okay, anything on number two, impact on geological features? Number three, impact on surface water? Down at the bottom of Page 9, impact on surface water? Page 10. Going to wastewater. Anything on bottom half of Page 10, wastewater? Okay. Everything under 3 had a no or small impact. But there was a further explanation given for letter E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from offland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. Any comments, questions, addendums there? Again, letter H was no or small impact. Letter H reads, proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. Anything on letter H, bottom of Page 11? All right, continue with letter H, on to Page 12. Anything finishing up with letter H? Okay, letter I references back to 3. E and H, just looked at. Anything on K, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities? Anything on that explanation? On Page 12. Okay, that finishes up at the top of Page 13. Then we're on to number four, impact on groundwater. Okay, they were all, all of them were no or small impact. Okay, anything on, impact on groundwater before groundwater withdrawal? Anything on groundwater withdrawal at the bottom of Page 13? All right, top of Page 14, groundwater withdrawal and wastewater disposal. Okay, and then the aquifer overlay district compliance? Okay. Top of Page 15, finishing up aquifer overlay compliance. Down to number five, impact on flooding. Okay, all the impacts on flooding were no or small impact. Okay, letter B, the proposed action may result in development in a 100-year floodplain. That has further explanation, bottom of Page 15, to the top of Page 16. Members of the planning board, any comments, questions, addendums there? Okay, top of Page 16, impacts on air.
Chairman, I just want to remind the board that even if they find that something doesn't rise to the level of a seeker impact here, there's still the ability to modify or add conditions under the special permit criteria...
Right.
...when you get to that point.
Thank you. Okay, so where we were at, impacts on air.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, impacts on air, they highlight letter F, other impacts, missions associated with burning fireplaces and biomass boiler, which is, again, checked off, they're under other impacts. And again, no, a small impact may occur. Bottom of Page 17, any comments, questions? Okay, table 12 to the top of Page 18, and then further explanation, another table on Page 18, any thing further there? Okay, top of Page 19, finishes up impacts on air. And then we're on to impacts on plants and animals. Okay, everything for impact on plants and animals was no or small impact may occur. Okay, so again, number seven, impacts on animals, through the bottom of Page 19. All right. Top of Page 20, down to timber rattlesnake mitigation. Anything on the timber rattlesnake mitigation to the bottom of Page 20? All right, timber rattlesnake continues on to Page 21. Anything on Page 21? Okay, top of Page 22, finishing up on timber rattlesnakes, anything further there? Number two, Indiana bat and northern long-eared bat mitigation, anything on the Indiana bat? Okay, number three, bog turtle mitigation, down to the bottom of Page 22. All right, top of Page 23, continues with bog turtle mitigation, then the bog turtle biologist, bog turtle protection, and the mowing procedures, where the notes are the same as for timber rattlesnakes. Okay, turtle crossing signs, how turtles can read signs, I guess. 20 pages in, I gotta make some joke.
What's that?
About the turtle crossing signs. I don't know how the turtles know how to read the signs.
It's embroil.
Anything further? Dog turtles, Page 23. Okay, that ends at the very top of Page 24, and then we're on to eight, impact on agricultural resources. Okay, there were a number of pages on the effect on plants and animals, again, all no or small impact, but does anybody have anything further there? Okay, number eight, impact agricultural resources. We checked off letter D as a moderate to large impact. Okay, so again, impact on agricultural resources, the narrative, anything before letter D? Okay, letter D, the proposed action may inversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than 2.5 acres if located in an agricultural district or more than 10 acres if within an agricultural district. Okay, and then a explanation is given through the bottom of Page 24 to the top of Page 25. Anything further on the irreversible conversion of agricultural land? Okay. Letter F, proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. Anything further there? All right, letter nine, oh boy, number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. None of the letters are checked off as moderate to large, they're all small or no impact. So again, number nine, second half of Page 25, anything further? Members of the planning board there?
Do you want to talk about that picture?
All right, on to Page 26.
Chairman?
Yes.
There were some comments that I think you all received recently about the photographs that were used for the view from the overlook from the Appalachian Trail. According to looking back at my review memos, early submissions from years ago at this point, that photograph that was claimed to be taken from a hiking blog was used as like the original photograph to introduce the board to the view.
Yes.
Since that time, when they presented various iterations of the visual study that their architects had worked on with them, and Insight and the architect on the team, they used their own photograph that was taken from that overlook. And I think the applicant can speak to that more, but I just wanted to clear that up.
You used somebody's photograph, you didn't have permission? And then you made your own photograph? You blurred out the guy, I just figured it was someone that worked for you, but, okay. Members of the planning board have any further comment on this copyright violation? I'm not sure what it is. What do we? That's not really the purview of the planning board, I guess. Good luck in your civil lawsuit on that photograph. Okay, we're on to Page 26. Thank you for bringing it up, Planner Warner, for the record. Letter D, the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is, and then to recreation or tourism-based activities, there's a further explanation given there. Again, the planning board has said that there's no or small impact that may occur. Okay, that finishes up number nine. Okay, number 10, impact on historic or agricultural resources. Okay, so, letter A and B are checked off as a moderate to large impact that may occur. And then since those are checked off, it triggers letter E, and all those are no or small impact. Let's go through the narrative for number 10. And we're at the bottom of Page 26. At the top of Page 27. Anything on Page 27? Okay, Page 28, building archaeological resources. Anything in the top half of Page 28? And then it gets into the farmhouse and the horse barn, bottom of Page 28. All right, and then it's on to Page 29, the horse barn continues, and then the three-barn complex, letter C, and other existing structures, letter D. Anything further on number 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources? Okay, number 11, impact on open space and recreation. Okay, it's privately-owned land, so no or small impact. All right, number 12, impact on critical environmental areas, again, there's no, so because there are no CEAs located or adjacent to the project site. Okay, number 13, impact on transportation. Yes, the proposed action may result in a change in existing transportation. Letter A, the projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network, and the rest are, that's a moderate to large impact that may occur. The rest are no or small impact may occur. All right, so anything further on impact on transportation? All right, so anything further on impact on transportation? Here at the bottom of page thirty.
This outlines the traffic study, the plans for the road, and the plans for the intersection of fifty-five, which DOT has been coordinating on with the town and the applicant.
Anything further through the bottom of page thirty? All right, page thirty-one, anything further there? Bottom of page thirty-one. All right, and then page thirty-two is mostly, just a rest rotation of memos and meetings. So again, anything further on impact on transportation, number thirteen? All right. Number fourteen, impact on energy. On to page thirty-two, top of page thirty-three, anything on impact on energy? Okay, number fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light. So again, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. We had letter A, as the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation, moderate to large impact may occur, and then the rest are no or small impact may occur. Okay, so impacts on noise, odor, and light, anything further from what we have here on page thirty-three? Okay, the bottom of page thirty-three, letter A, again, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations. So the bottom of page thirty-three into page thirty-four. Further comments, questions, addendums? Okay, through the bottom of page thirty-four to the top of page thirty-five, anything Sixteen, impact on human health, we had no. Seventeen, consistency with community plans, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, no. Bit of a double negative there. So sixteen, again, impact on human health. And then seventeen, consistency with community plans. All right, brings us to the bottom of page thirty-five, any further comments, questions, thoughts? Okay, to the top of page thirty-six. Anything further on community plans? All right, eighteen, consistency with community character, proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. We said no. And then the, excuse me, I'm gonna need some more water here soon. Consistency with community character, proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, and then an explanation of number eighteen. Thank you both. Down to the bottom of page thirty-six with references to any number of memos. Continuing on to page thirty-seven. Anything further through page thirty-seven? Okay, top of page thirty-eight, conclusion, five point zero, conclusion. Anything further on the narrative for the conclusion of this part three? Okay, and then the exhibit table of contents. All right, having reviewed this document in its entirety, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions, thoughts? Member Villano?
Nope.
Member Roman?
Nope.
Member La Robidere?
No.
Member Holmes?
Oh.
Member Sador? Okay, Attorney Paladaro? Planner Warner, next up.
I do not have a resolution prepared tonight for the board to vote on. If the board wants to proceed, it could do it on motion.
There seems to be a lot going on here to just come up with a motion right now.
Just letting you know that I, the next step would be to have a resolution drawn up to adopt a negative declaration based on part two, three, and the attachment to part three that you just reviewed.
All right, now the public hearing for subdivision is scheduled for
The sixth.
The sixth, four weeks from now, so a resolution regarding SEACRO would need to then proceed that public hearing if we're concerned about this court case from somewhere in New York State that doesn't really affect us.
I mean, I think this was done openly and publicly, and everyone's going to have an idea of which way the board is going, but you could consider the negative declaration before you open the public hearing on the sixth.
All right, so do any of our consultants see anything further at this time with Harnavelli I can't hear you nodding.
No, there was a negative declaration drafted at the last meeting that was available to look at. It basically references each one of these sections where each of the twelve criteria for determining significance are discussed. They reference the sections of that report you just scrolled through, citing, you know, those sections is why those particular criteria does not result in a significant impact. So it's a very short NECDAC only because it's going to be having that part three report attached to the back of it. Differs from the Transco report, the Transco draft NECDAC we shared last time because that had the reasoned elaboration within it. In this case, there was a forty-one page report.
I think it's thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
That we attached.
So on a non-secret issue, I just want to go back to this comment earlier about the project needing a variance, and there is a section in your code which says that non-conforming parking lots shall be brought into conformity to the extent practical when it's expanded or changed in use, and so
This is what section of the code?
That's one forty-five dash thirty-eight, A, I don't know, A for
One forty-five, thirty-eight.
Then yes, go down to four, and then go down to E.
Design layout and construction of parking areas, location, screening?
Correct, so the screening requirement is in this section, sub-four, but then as you go down to subsection E of subsection, sub-four, it does talk about the fact that existing parking lots, you know, there is room, there's an extent practical standard when there's a new project or it's being expanded. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you. Anything further this evening with regard to Harnavelli Homestead? Okay. All right, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in four weeks. All right, next on the agenda, we have Old Business, Savalos. Representative from Savalos, please come to the podium. Let's just give everybody like thirty seconds to clear out.
Okay. Good to go. Okay, I'm Steve Whalen of Whalen Architecture, joined tonight by Ruben Savalos, the owner of this project. Since our last presentation, we've addressed the three outstanding issues per the planning board comments, one of which was to meet with a member of the fire department to make sure that we had the proper width at the existing driveway and that there was access for fire department apparatus. So on January thirty-first, I met with Brian Kelly of the fire department, I brought him a copy of the plan, he didn't feel it was necessary to go out to the site, so he was going to get in touch with the building inspector just to review
Okay.
The building inspector's comments, so then I followed that up, I had a conversation with the building official, and he actually went out to the site on February first, and we got a verbal approval from him that everything out there is okay. And then the most important revision of the drawings and to the, to the project is we have downsized significantly the septic system. It's now designed for a two-bedroom apartment or three employees, it's the same size for either or.
And so this, you anticipated last time this may take several months to get through approval?
Yeah, I was surprisingly wrong, so.
Okay, it's nice to be wrong sometimes.
Absolutely.
Okay, and just for clarification, you met with Brian Kelly, he's a former fire chief and current president of the fire company. It wasn't just some random member of the fire company you met with, you met with?
Correct, yeah, I reached out to the fire department
An appropriate person, right.
And Brian was the one that responded back to me, I guess.
Okay, I have nothing further at this time. We'll go through members of the planning board, member Roman?
No.
Member Villano? Member Sador?
Nope.
Member Holmes?
Nope.
Member La Robidere? We'll start with Engineer Berger, one of the big issues was the septic.
Yeah, that's been resolved, so I have no further
Amazingly, seems.
I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen these plans?
No, I have not seen them, I'm just taking them at their word.
But we will review those plans.
Once we see them, yes.
Yes, once you see them.
Based on that, there's no reason to comment on what I needed.
Sure. All right. Were you surprised at how quickly the Department of Health turned it around?
No.
No, you were not surprised, okay. Planner Warner?
Okay, so I believe at the last meeting, we did refer to the county also, right? But we haven't heard back, it's only been two weeks. Okay, so they did meet with the fire department, we asked them to do that, we asked for the referral to the county with the previous plan set, which shouldn't really make a difference on the application, but I think at this point, you're able to probably set a hearing for next meeting because it does require a public hearing. If you're ready to do that, and we can wait for the county's response in between now and then, and hold the hearing at the March meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Attorney Paladaro?
Procedurally, the next step is to hold a hearing.
Yes, Planner Warner said.
But we need the plans in order to
Sure.
Set that hearing, just to confirm that, I know, I haven't had a chance to look at them because they haven't been submitted, so, you know, the board should require that the plans be submitted by a particular date, or the hearing won't be published, so that everyone has an opportunity to review. When you say the building inspector gave you a verbal approval that everything is okay, did you mean specifically on the issue of whether or not this was a home occupation?
No, just to review if the fire department, you know, can have access and can at least get around the building.
I believe it was acting as a fire official.
Okay. I thought we still had an outstanding question that we wanted you to meet with the building inspector about the use itself, because
Let's go to the code.
But did we resolve that?
Yeah, they're downsizing, so
We talked about it at the last meeting, how they're pretty much assuming they're going for the home occupation special permit, they're voluntarily applying for that now.
The issue is the number of employees.
What drew our concern last time was the size of the septic system showed sixteen employees when they were showing that they would only have two onsite around time, or they were showing that they would comply with the home occupation provisions of the code, so.
So, yeah, one forty-five dash forty-one
Yeah.
B one has eight criteria and standards.
We went through those last time, based on their responses that they provided in writing. I, yeah, I agree, I don't think we actually saw the latest, I think we saw an email from the applicant giving an update on what happened since last meeting, but I don't think we actually have a copy of all those drawings.
And I can get those to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as I got it, I emailed it to Marilyn, and then said, you know, we present it here at the, at the board meeting, but I can get copies and we can resubmit them by tomorrow, and be ready for the March sixth meeting.
Okay, I'm just checking the email to see what we have here. Okay.
I mean, that was it, if
Yeah.
If everyone's satisfied that
So, I mean, the deadline, Secretary Van Mullen is, right, fifteenth?
February fifteenth.
Yeah, so as long as you have it submitted by
Okay.
Fifteenth, you say you submit tomorrow?
Yep, I can get it in sooner rather than later.
All right, so anything further, Attorney Paladaro?
Not for me.
All right. Members of the planning board, having heard from our consultants, does anyone have any further comments or questions at this time? Okay, so we need a motion to set a public hearing for Savalos for March sixth, at seven PM or soon thereafter, the planning board can hear public comment, provided plans are submitted to our attorney's satisfaction before the deadline of February fifteenth. Is there a motion?
Make one.
Motion made by member Holmes, seconded by
Seconded by
Member Roman. Discussion, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say no. Motion passes six-zero with one absence. We will need to have a, some kind of quick meeting about the order of all these different public hearings we have for our next meeting.
Yeah, ours will be very quick.
Well, that might help you in going first, we'll see. Do we have anything further regarding this Savalos project at this time? Okay, seeing nothing further, we will see you in four weeks, provided you submit the information you need to submit.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you on the sixth.
Is there something? All right, next we have Old Business discussion for NY Transco LLC, the Dover Electric Substation. Thank you. All right, if the applicant, please approach the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Anthony Miranda from Cutty and Fader, here tonight with New York Transco, joining me, Sam Johnson and Shannon Beck's Vaness is here. Thank you, thank you to this board, this has been a long and difficult review process, I'm sure, for the board members, we appreciate all the time you've put in. As we all know, the board closed the hearing at the last meeting in January twenty-third, had an open comment period until February first. The board also completed the SEACR part two, and went through it thoroughly at the last meeting, and reviewed a draft NECDAC. We came here tonight, as we mentioned in our correspondences to this board, following up from that hearing, providing you with a summary of the SEACR record, some additional information, response to some comments we got, and seeking for the planning board to take action on this critical project. That said, I understand as I was walking in tonight, taking my coat off, that you may have received an email
Yes.
From someone from Fish and Wildlife Services.
Yes.
I have no information on that, other than that I was told about it and showed it right before we were walking in. There's no evidence or basis in the email for any of their, their comments, so we don't have much more much more to give you, other than, you know, what we know in terms of what that email said. I think the applicant would say that, at this point, the record still is what the record is, and supports the requested negative declaration and granting of the approvals. Presumably, opposition to this project has submitted something to them, but we can't comment on that at the moment. We'd like to understand where the board is, because, as we've said a few times, the record is robust with expert opinions and thorough analysis. So we still maintain our position, that the record supports the requests we've made, but certainly like to hear from the board.
All right. Do you require any permits from Fish and Wildlife? No?
Fish and Wildlife has reviewed the application as it stands. Their original response was that with the protective measures that we put in for the bog turtles, that we've met the requirements that they are aware of, and they believe that there'll be no impacts.
Okay.
And you have no permits, to answer your question.
No permits, okay. So then I guess it goes to, why is Fish and Wildlife reviewing this? Because you reached out to them, or they just decided sometime in the past, we'd like to talk with you about presumably fish and wildlife?
So originally, we did consult with them.
You did?
Almost two years ago. And that process has been ongoing, and we received that communication from them, I believe it was the week of Christmas.
Okay.
And then this is a new email, again.
Sure.
Haven't seen it, but new correspondence.
Yeah, and we received correspondence from Fish and Wildlife up until a couple of weeks ago, confirming their review of the application in terms of species, and finding no potential impacts, and identifying the clearing restriction window for, I believe it's Indiana, that.
Okay.
So that was as of January 20... Forget the exact date, but January 27th.
Okay, so there's no, you consulted with them two years ago, or so?
Well, ongoing.
Because you just wanted to reach out?
No, so part of it is also discussing through the DEC process, as well as with Fish and Wildlife, is ArmyCor, SHIBO, all the other agencies. And we designed the project that we wouldn't need permits from anybody, that we would be having appropriate measures, so that we wouldn't impact or have any take or anything like that on any of the species that are of concern. And that's the letter we've received back from all of the agencies, that we have basically have no impact. Therefore, with the measures that we proposed, they were agreeable that the project could go forward.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to further understand, like, you didn't reach out to the Department of Energy, this involves energy, you didn't reach out to other federal agencies?
In the initial process of reviewing for SEACER, as maybe Aaron can jump in if you would like, but the...
Sure, he would love that.
Well, I don't want to advise the board if they're consultants.
My recollection of this was, and I look back at the first memo from October 2021, their submission right from the beginning, and we had a pre-application meeting where we said, we want you to focus on these things, visual impacts, species, wetlands, historic, everything that they came to us with, that we've talked about for a long time now. When they came into that first submission, they had a biology report, or a habitat report, and some supporting documentation from TRC, their consultant, and within that, they said that they consulted with both DEC and Fish and Wildlife, in order to get the lists together of what are the species of concern here, because there's a federal list and there's a state list.
Right.
So I think that's what got Fish and Wildlife in, hooked into this, even though there's no permit. So my original memo was just, okay, continue that consultation, let us know how it goes.
Or evading anything.
But you don't have to get any permits from Fish and Wildlife, okay.
The real question is, does Fish and Wildlife have any jurisdiction in this application review process?
Right. Or are they just repeating what the DEC does with respect to that agency?
They're a consultant.
The concern is that, you know, that there's contaminants on the site, and, you know, what might come of those contaminants with the construction of your project? So, I don't know. You got, we got the email at 4:25, when I realized we got the email at 4:25, but forwarded to our consultants at, I don't know, 5:45? And then, yeah, it was forwarded to you, so you were aware of it as well?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the purpose of Fish and Wildlife was, we consulted with them with respect to any potential federal species.
Right.
And it was found that there wasn't an issue associated with that.
Right.
That's, in terms of jurisdiction, that's what it is.
Okay. And the email references contaminants, which were already known to the planning board, we were the ones that said to you to pull the tires out of the wetlands.
And we went back to the DEC.
And the DEC said, oh, yeah, actually, that's a good idea, so.
We did it, and we walked through that consultation with them. We had site visits with the New York State DEC.
Right.
In fact, we walked through the means and methods of how those, the specific tires would be removed, that they were allowing us to take out, and how they would be taken out, and we've incorporated all that into the application materials before you.
Right.
I understand that would be a condition, which was identified on the resolution that was put forth on the website.
And in the submission to Fish and Wildlife, they were made aware of what was being done on the site?
So they were copied on all correspondence that went back and forth with the DEC.
Okay.
I can't validate that they read it.
Sure.
But they were copied on all correspondence. And actually, both agencies have a habit of copying each other.
Right.
On the correspondence.
Okay. All right, Attorney Polidaro?
Which species are federally listed? It's, I know it's in the report.
Yeah, it's bats, rattlesnakes, and turtles that apply to this particular project.
Right, so when there's a federal permit, Fish and Wildlife has to weigh in, and when there's a federal endangered species, they also have jurisdiction over that species?
If there's a potential taking?
Yeah.
Not just?
If there's a potential take.
ICA, whatever, somewhere nearby.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's see if members of the planning board have anything further at this time? Member Holmes?
Nope.
Member Sador? Member Roman?
No.
Member Valano?
Nope.
Member La Robidere? Okay. Engineer Berger? Anything?
No, nothing.
Planner Werner?
I'll just make a note that since the last meeting, the draft of the negative declaration was revised to address the, at first, it was discussed to just talk more about the blasting within 1,500 feet of a residence, so that was expanded on. There's also been some added text on the contamination concern, just elaborating on what was provided by the applicant as far as the testing, the soil samples and groundwater samples taken in the area of disturbance, in the area of the equipment for the project. So that's in there, including what measures there will be in place by, with the town, including the erosion sediment controls, which Joe can talk more about, and also the fact that, as is done with construction all over town, if there's anything that's encountered that they weren't aware of as they excavate the site, DEC always gets called in, and what they do is open up, you know, a spill case, it's called, with the spills program, if they found any kind of, you know, barrels or tanks that contain, you know, fluids or any kind of petroleum products. They would open a spill, they would remediate it, they would stop work, they would remediate it to the satisfaction of DEC. That's just an institutional control that's common in all construction, that Joe is very familiar with, the building inspector is very familiar with. So we added that provision in there, just to make it clear that that's built into this construction. I understand from the applicant that they are also going to, as part of the erosion sediment control, obviously, there'll be silt fencing, there'll be all these measures to protect runoff going into neighboring properties when soils are exposed. There'll be stockpiles that are covered appropriately. They are going to also bring in their own, when they have to bring in fill, you know, there'll be crushed stone, but there'll also be clean, certified clean fill in areas that are needing fill. So, you know, that's all part of the records so far, so. Happy to talk more about the contamination question if it comes up, but I think the revisions made to the NAGDEC, if you want to read through them, and feel free to comment and edit, we can talk about them.
Okay. Attorney Polidaro?
If the board intends to move forward tonight, we need to address the letter received from Fish and Wildlife in the documents and add a sentence, at least explaining that why, you know, why you want to move forward, despite the issue, potential issue raised in that letter. You know, we can come up with language, but something like the specific reviews done on the property and soil testing, you know, the board finds that they carry more weight than a, you know, potential question that was received last minute from Fish and Wildlife.
Well, it's just, I mean, the public comment period is closed. There's no federal permit for Fish and Wildlife. I mean, I just see it as another opinion. I mean, it just...
Well, I mean, it raised, it raised a question, and so I think the board has to address it, and...
I agree, I just...
Yeah.
I mean, again, if someone from the DEC said this may have an impact on how we do our job, which, you know, our town engineer and our building inspector are going to be communicating with the DEC weekly, then yeah, I would think that makes sense.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is also a stormwater permit, so the DEC is not just involved by the town engineer and the building inspector, but DEC is involved as being a stormwater permit.
Right.
As part of the project. So they are integral to this project regardless, you know, wherever, when it goes forward. So they're already there, so if anything is discovered by myself or Don, they're already in the loop with the NOI permit, which is a stormwater permit.
Right. And again, I think we need to have as a condition that, you know, anybody from Transco, you know, finds anything that needs to be reported to the, you know, New York State DEC or any other agency, that, you know, our town engineer or building inspector is notified, I mean, immediately, I mean, you know, within 24 hours.
Sure.
Just, we need to know what's going on, so.
Correct.
All right. Feldman, anything further?
No.
Planner Werner? Attorney Polidaro?
No, I think if you want to go through the latest draft of that negative declaration and figure out how we want to reword it.
Yeah.
We can do that tonight, or?
Yeah, I'm working on language.
Oh, okay. Sounds like the attorney's working on some draft language right now.
Okay. All right, so let's, X out the LA Homestead stuff here. Should be a Word file of it. Okay. All right, so like we did before with LA Homestead, just is there any part of the 10-page full environmental assessment form that any member of the planning board would like to revisit? Number one?
I do have one. I think in, I think there was a public comment, actually, on impact on land, talking about construction on land where bedrock is exposed. And there is a portion where there will be blasting, and so I thought 1C should be changed to moderate or large impact, just because it's a threshold question. The blasting protocols are addressed in the narrative.
Okay, so members of the planning board, we have no or small impact may occur on 1C. Without objection, change to moderate to large impact may occur? Any questions? All right, anything further, number one? Okay, number two? Number three, impacts on surface water? Number four, impact on groundwater? Okay, number five, impact on flooding was a no. Number six, impacts on air was a no. Number seven, impacts on plants and animals were yes. All the subparts were no or small impact. Anything further, number seven? Okay, number eight, impact on agricultural resources was a no. Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources was a yes. All the subparts were no or small impact. Further, number nine? Number 10 was a yes. All the subparts for number 10 were no or small impact. Anything further, number 10? Number 11, impact on open space recreation was a no. Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas was a yes. A and B were both no or small impact may occur. 13, impact on transportation was a no. 14, impact on energy was a yes. A through D were all no's, no or small impact may occur. Anything further, number 14? Okay, number 15, impact on noise, odor, and light, that was a yes. Letter B, the pros actually may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home was a yes, or, I'm sorry, not a yes, but a moderate or large impact that may occur. Everything else was a no. Anything further there? Okay. Again, Attorney Polidaro, just to be clear, that was one of those threshold questions that there is blasting within 1,500 feet of a residence, as there is a residence a few hundred feet from.
Correct.
The site, okay. So, yes. Number 16, impact on human health? So, yes, but all the subparts were no or small impact may occur. And then 17 was a no. And 18 was a yes, consistency with community character, all the subparts were no or small impact may occur. So again, members of the planning board, any further consideration to give to any of the 18 impacts, or their subparts? Member Valano?
Nope.
Member Roman?
No.
Member Sador?
Nope.
Member Holmes?
Nope.
Member La Robidere? Okay. All right, so having gone through the Part II again, I will now go on to Part III.
So there's a Part III form that really just references the attached expanded negative declaration document, so I would just open up that Word file. I think the one that says revised doc? The other Word version, yeah. Can you scroll down? Yeah, so anything that was added since last meeting is just red.
Okay.
It's not track changes, just red text for.
Okay.
Use of reference. So you'll see there's some stuff in there on the blasting, there's an expanded discussion on blasting, if you're going to read through it.
Yeah.
And I'll just let you read.
All right, and then... Okay, so not the draft, but the revised draft. So not this one, this one?
Says revised draft, that one, yeah.
All right. Okay, I think I'm going to, what is it, eight pages? I think for full...
Seven.
Seven. Oh, only seven. All right, for, I think, full clarity, I'll read through everything here, that way members of the planning board are fully aware of what is being written, yeah, and your full awareness of everything else we've done before. Okay, environmental quantity review, notice of termination... Okay, Environmental Quality Review, Notice of Termination of Significance, Negative Declaration dated February 6, 2022. Wrong year. All right?
2023.
Should say 2023. Good catch. See, we're off to a great start. This notice is issued pursuant to Part 617 of theenth Amendment and Regulations pertaining Article 8, State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SECR, of the Environmental Conservation Law. The Town of Dover Planning Board as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant environmental impact, and the draft's environmental, draft impact statement will not be prepared. Name of action, NY Transco Dover Substation, 2238 Route 22. Location, 2238 Route 22, Town of Dover, Dutchess County, New York. Seeker action, classification. So again, not type 1, it's Xedoff as unlisted, just to be clear. Condition, negative declaration, no. Description of action, the applicant, New York Transco LLC, is seeking site plan, special permit, and roads and sediment control, or ESC, permit approval from the Town of Dover Planning Board to facilitate construction of a new electrical substation, collectively known as the project, proposed at 2238 Route 22, tax parcel number 132600-7061-00-698172 at the southeast corner of New York State Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road, AKA County Route 26, collectively known as the site. The 16.3 acre site is located within the town's CO or Commercial/Industry/Office Mixed Use zoning district and contains an existing building used for office and warehouse space. Parking areas and access drive via curb cut off Route 22 and perimeter fencing with barbed wire that ranges from 7 to 8 feet in height. Site also contains three existing access points with gates on Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road that will be eliminated and fully landscaped as part of the proposal. Site was previously used as an automobile junkyard, a building material storage yard, and the office and maintenance facility for Cablevision, also known as Optimum. Existing electrical power generation, transmission, and distribution uses are located in the area surrounding the site. These uses include the Consolidation of New York, or CONED, 345 KV Transmission Line Corridor, known as Line 398, CONED Right-of-Way, known as the ROW, and Dover Solar Farm Facility to the north, and the Cricket Valley Energy Center to the west. The Iroquois Gas Transmission Pipeline is located, is also located adjacent to the CONED Right-of-Way in proximity to the site. The project is an electrical substation that would be in an unoccupied public utility facility monitored remotely for safety and security. The substation will be used to control the flow of energy and the existing transmission system, and will include transformers, lightning, mass control unit, and transmission line poles within a fenced area on the site. The project will interconnect with the existing transmission system via new overhead 345 KV lines tying into the CONED Line 398, which is an existing 345 KV electrical transmission line located immediately north of the project site and Cricket Hill Road, AKA County Route Proposed interconnection is subject to an existing certificate of environmental compatibility and public need, known as a CECPN, issued by the New York State Public Service Commission, or the PSC. Upgrades within the ROW to Line 398 are subject to the review jurisdiction of the PSC pursuant to the New York State Public Service Law, Article 7, and not the Town of Dover. ROW upgrades are certainly excluded from review under SECR. Nonetheless, the Line 398 ROW upgrades have been reviewed by agencies consulted during the town's review under SECR, including the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. As discussed further below, these agencies have identified no adverse impacts or corresponding agency permits in connection with the work proposed for Line 398 as part of the project. Okay, we're very top of page two. Does anybody have any comments, questions, anybody on the planning board or consultants have anything to add or subtract, multiply or divide? Nope? Okay. Anyway, the project is proposed on approximately 8.4 acres of the 16.3 acre site. The fenced substation area will surround approximately 5 acres. All equipment, including transformers, lightning masks, and transmission line poles, will be located within the fenced area. All equipment is proposed outside of setback areas and more than 150 feet from the center lines of Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road. Existing 7 and 8-foot tall fencing will be removed in areas along the property lines, and new 9-foot fencing will be installed approximately 100 feet further into the site. A single permanent access driveway is proposed from Route 22 approximately 733 feet south of Cricket Hill Road. Temporary access for construction is proposed from the existing gated access points found along Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road. Landscaped buffers are proposed along the Route 22 and Cricket Hill Road frontages. The existing office would continue to serve as an office for visiting site inspectors and its facade improved with landscaping. The project does not propose financial assistance from an industrial development, development agency such as a payment in lieu of taxes, and the impacts of any such assistance have not been evaluated as part of this SECR review. Okay? Anything on that? A reason supporting this determination, the planning board has reviewed several supplemental studies and reports and agency correspondence in connection with this determination, including but not limited to the following: wetland and stream delineation report prepared by TRC dated September 2021; letter from the Town of Dover Building Inspector regarding proposed equipment and town code requirements dated November 10, 2021; visual impact assessment prepared by TRC dated September 2021 revised December 2, 2021, and April 28, 2022; sound level impact assessment report prepared by Epsilon dated September 2021 revised December 1, 2021 revised April 28, 2022, and revised July 28, 2022; sound level testing protocols prepared by Epsilon dated August 10, 2022; undated letter from Friends of the Great Swamp received December 19, 2021; soil and groundwater testing and environmental conditions; letter from TRC dated July 28, 2022; blasting and hydrology memo prepared by Terricon dated April 27, 2022; U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, or USACE, no permit required, I'm sorry, quote, no permit required, end quote, letter dated March 2, 2022; New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, or the NYSDEC, validated wetland map dated October 28, 2021; NYSDEC and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, or USFWS, correspondence on wetlands and threatened endangered species dated July 15, 2022, and December 27, 2022, respectively; New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, or OPRHP, archaeological and architectural review letters dated August 13, 2021, November 23, 2021, and May 31, 2022; environmental justice response memorandum prepared by TRC dated November 4, 2022; New York State DEC correspondence on potential environmental justice areas, or PEGJA, dated December 16, 2022.
Chairman?
Yes.
Although this list is not intended to be inclusive, it really only cites to agency and expert review letters, I suggest that we note the KIVIAT report in this section because it was something that the board reviewed.
Okay. And how do we want to title that and the date of it?
Um, I'll get you a date. Yeah. I would say Hudsonia, I think it was a biodiversity assessment. And we'll pull up the date. It was, yeah, it was a preliminary biodiversity assessment dated January 18, 2023, prepared by Hudsonia.
Hudsonia Preliminary Biodiversity Assessment dated.
January 18, 2023.
18, 2023.
And then I, we did get another comment letter from TRC dated February 1, 2023. February 1, 2023. And again, this is not intended to be all-inclusive, but.
Yeah, maybe call it response to comment letter.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
Dated, what was it again?
February 1, 2023. And, well, we have this other Fish and Wildlife letter, too. For the 24th one.
You're going to speak to it anyway, so why not?
Well, there's a bullet there that says July, for U.S. Fish and Wildlife, July 15, 2022, December 27, 2022, and we can add, and January.
Yeah, well, the way I read that is that there's one from the DEC, July 15, and there's one from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, December 27.
Right, so we had.
Okay.
Another letter from Fish and Wildlife, January 1, 2023.
Maybe between Hudsonia and TRC, we can make a new one?
Yeah, wait, there's good.
Okay. All right, maybe just make it a separate bullet.
Yeah, maybe.
Point. New York State DEC correspondence on wetlands and threatened endangered species dated July 15, 2022, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service correspondence on wetlands and threatened endangered species dated December 27, 2022, and January. And January 24, 2023.
And then last on the list, there was a letter from Terricon, a response letter dated February 1, 2023, response to come again.
Members of the planning board, anything further, and then to page two here.
You just made periods on those last two bullet points.
Okay. "The project will not result in any significant impacts from, quote, 'a substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground, or surface water quality or quantity, traffic or noise levels, substantial increase in solid waste production, a substantial increase in potential erosion, flooding, leaching, or drainage problems,' end quote." Section 617.7, subsection C, subsection 1, subsection I. "The project is a substation and not an electric generating facility, and therefore will not result in any impacts related to air emissions. The project will not utilize groundwater, will not provide, not produce, wastewater or solid waste." Two wetlands, AW1B and AW2B, identified on the site are under the jurisdiction of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and New York State DEC. These wetlands are hydrologically connected to New York State DEC Wetland DP-22, located approximately 860 feet south of the site boundary. No project-related disturbance is proposed within the New York State DEC jurisdictional wetlands, AW1B and AW2B, 100-foot wetland adjacent areas or water bodies. After visiting the site, the New York State DEC validated the applicant's wetland delineation map on October 28, 2021, valid until October 28, 2026. The remaining two onsite wetlands, AW3B and AW4B, are small, isolated depressions totaling 0.04 acres with no inlet or outlet. Wetlands AW3B and AW4B are not mapped by New York State DEC and are proposed to be filled as part of the project's construction. The filling of these isolated wetlands is not considered a significant impact, and in a letter dated March 3, 2022, the Army Corps of Engineers, USACE, confirmed them to be non-jurisdictional wetlands because they are not connected to waters of the United States. The applicant also contained, the applicant also obtained after several rounds of coordination with New York State DEC, a written approval to remove debris in specific locations outside of the planned area of disturbance in the 100-foot adjacent area, AKA buffer, around New York State DEC validated wetland AW1B, in a manner that would avoid any adverse impacts to the wetland. Planning board will require this debris removal. The debris the applicant will be required to remove from these areas consists mostly of old tires and metal scraps. New York State DEC confirmed in writing on March 2, 2022, that removing debris identified in locations on the submitted map and in the manner described should avoid adverse impacts to the wetlands and will not require any permit from New York State DEC. The project will be unoccupied and remotely operated, and as a result, will not generate traffic other than temporary traffic during construction. The applicant provided a noise impact assessment completed by Epsilon Associates July 2022, including the measurement of existing sound levels and computer modeling to predict the sound levels from the project. The noise assessment evaluated the project against New York State DEC noise policy guidelines and standards found within the Town of Dover Code. The conservatively modeled sound levels at the site property line are depicted, are predicted to be well below the Town of Dover daytime and nighttime sound level limits of 60 dB and 50 dB, respectively. In coordination with the town engineer, the applicant has committed to conduct sound testing on the site after completion of construction during the commissioning stage of the project. Sound test measurement locations shall include the four receptor locations at the site property lines that are identified in the Epsilon Report. The town engineer, the town engineer may require the applicant to include in the test no more than four additional measurement locations at the site property lines. If noncompliance of the town code is observed, the applicant shall coordinate with the town engineer to evaluate potential corrective measures. With these protocols in place as part of the project, no significant adverse noise impacts are anticipated. Blasting of bedrock on a limited extent of the site will occur within 1,500 feet of a residence and a critical environmental area, the Great Swamp. Blasting will be temporary and is expected to occur at a point within the site preparation phase of the project's construction, a phase that in total will last approximately four months. All blasting will be in accordance with the town building code requirements, Town Code Chapter 69, and will require a permit from the town. Additional information on blasting is provided, on blasting is provided below, under the discussion of critical environmental areas. Anybody have any comments? Any members of the planning board have any comments, questions up to this point? Okay. The applicant has prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWPPP, or SWIP, and erosion sediment control, or ESC, plan to the satisfaction of the town engineer. The SWIP shows that the project will result in a reduction in peak stormwater runoff rate for each drainage area for all designed storms. Erosion sediment control measures will be implemented in accordance with GP-0-20-001 and Chapter 65 of the town code. With these measures in place as part of the project, no significant impacts to any regulated wetlands or streams on or off-site are anticipated. The site is not located within or near a 100-year or 500-year floodplain. All right, so again, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions, additions, subtractions? Seeing none. "Project will not result in any significant impacts from, quote, 'removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation or fauna, substantial interference with the movement of any resident or migratory fish or wildlife species, impacts on a significant habitat area, substantial adverse impacts on a threatened or endangered species of animal or plant or the habitat of such a species, or other significant adverse impacts to natural resources,' end quote." That's 617.7, subsection C, subsection 1, subsection II. Early review process, the site was identified as potentially containing habitat for several state and federally listed and threatened, endangered, or special concern species, including Indiana bat, bog turtle, timber rattlesnake, fairy wand, and New England cottontail. To avoid potential impacts to Indiana bat, which has not been observed on-site, the applicant will limit tree clearing on the site to the period between October 1 and March 31. While potential bog turtle habitat was not observed on the site, the applicant has coordinated with the New York State DEC to provide appropriate measures to protect bog turtles, including turtle exclusion fencing and an education and encounter plan. The closest timber rattlesnake den in the vicinity of the site is located west of State Route 22, and this road provides a significant enough barrier that it would make it unlikely for timber rattlesnakes to be using the site. However, the applicant has prepared an education and encounter plan for timber rattlesnakes if needed during construction, in addition to that prepared for bog turtle. Based on surveys conducted by the applicant in coordination, in coordination with New York State DEC. York State D E C, it was determined that the site does not contain fairy wand or habitat for the New England cotton tail. Following several rounds of coordination and review, the Planning Board's consultants in New York State D E C, New York State D E C confirmed via email on January fifteen, twenty twenty-two, that the, that with inclusion of measures proposed by the applicant as part of the project and memorialized in the site plan set, the project will, quote, "avoid and/or minimize any direct impacts to individual bog turtles and avoid potential changes to the chemistry, quality, and quantity of surface and groundwater entering the adjacent wetland." And further, that the project does not require a Part one eighty-two incidental take permit for any state-listed species, end quote. Although there is no federal nexus, i.e. funding permitting associated with the project, the applicant coordinated with the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, or U S F W S, in a letter dated December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, U S F W S indicated that based on the measures noted above, no take of Indiana bat or bog turtle would occur with the project, and no further coordination with U S F W S is required for the project.
Chairman?
Yes.
So in this section, I was going to propose another paragraph for the board's consideration, should you choose to proceed tonight. The Planning Board acknowledges receipt of an email from U S F W S on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Comma, after the close of the public hearing, comma. Hmm? Oh. Um, questioning potential contamination from tires and debris at the site.
Questioning the potential. What was that again? Questioning.
Questioning potential contamination from tires and debris at the site. Or the possibility of contamination? I don't know. We can, we can wordsmith it in a minute. From tires and debris at the site, capital S. The Planning Board finds that the site-specific information provided by the applicant and reviewed by the board and its consultants comma, including soil testing comma, stormwater management features and a debris removal plan approved by the N Y S D E C, comma.
And the debris removal plan.
Approved by NYSDEC. Comma, adequately address the general concern raised in the email.
Adequately.
Address the general concern raised in the email from U S F W S.
Addressed or addresses?
Uh.
Adequately addressed.
Address, I said address, present tense, but we.
Adequately addressed.
Well, I would say address.
Adequately address.
Or addresses. The general concern raised in the email from U S F W S.
Raised in the email from U S F W S.
Right, yeah. And that's a good suggestion, but that's.
Planning Board, Planning Board acknowledges receipt of an email from okay, U S F W S on February sixth, twenty twenty-three, after the close of the public hearing. Questioning potential contamination from tires and debris on the site. Planning Board finds that the site.
Yeah, hyphen.
Specific. Information provided by the applicant and reviewed by the board and its consultants, including soil testing, stormwater management features, and the debris removal plan approved by New York State D E C, adequately address the general concern raised in the email from U S F W S. Okay. So members of the planning board, anything up until the par, before this paragraph that was just written? Is there anything there that anyone wanted to go over? Okay. Anything about this paragraph as just typed by me? Which, I think I typed it relatively quickly, considering the most. Anything regarding this paragraph? Okay. Continuing on. All right. The project will not result in, quote, "the impairment of the environmental characteristics of a critical environmental area as designated pursuant to subdivision six one seven point fourteen G," end quote. That's six one seven point seven, subsection C, subsection one, subsection I I I, or three. The site is adjacent to the Great Swamp, which is identified as a critical environmental area. The Friends of the Great Swamp had identified a potential concern with blasting creating fissures in the marble bedrock to the Great Swamp. Although limited bedrock blasting is anticipated in the northern, the northern and northwest portions of the site, the town engineer has reviewed a hydrogeologic and geotechnical memorandum provided by TerraCon on behalf of the applicant dated April seventh, twenty twenty-two, indicating that construction, as well as operation of the project, is not shown to have an adverse or measurable impact on the quantity or quality of water which enters the system for the adjacent Great Swamp. In addition, following several rounds of coordination and review with the Planning Board's consultants and New York State D E C, New York State D E C confirmed via email on January fifteen, twenty twenty-two, that with inclusion of measures proposed by the applicant as part of the project and memorialized in the site plan set, the project will, quote, "avoid potential changes to the chemistry, quality, and quantity of surface and groundwater entering the adjacent wetlands," end quote. Any members of the planning board have any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Was that not the same letter that identified a concern about blasting not only creating fissures, but creating vibrations that might affect bog turtles on the property owned by the Friends of the Great Swamp? I remember a letter that talked about the possibility of vibration from blasting affecting the adjoining property, and I thought that was from the Friends of the Great Swamp.
That's still the same TerraCon report, and that was prepared in response to the great, the Friends of the Great Swamp's comments.
Yeah, it was in the report.
So you're saying it was both vibration and fissures?
Yes.
Yes, that it wasn't just about fissures that might, you know, affect water flow or anything like that, but that vibrations would, could actually affect bog turtles on the adjoining property. That's my recollection.
Pulling it up right now.
Uh, sure, you may have more information about the report than we can recollect right now.
It was actually the D E C that brought this up, and that was why the blasting exclusion period went up until, you can't start blasting until April first. Their concern was that the potential vibration would wake the turtles from hibernation, so we agreed that we wouldn't, we would not blast until the first of April.
Yeah, the mitigation is the time period.
That's correct.
Not that they can change the blasting, but when it's being done. That's the typical mitigation we do.
Okay.
Okay. So we can add creating fissures and vibrations. Without objection. The marble bedrock of the Great Swamp. Uh, in addition, following several rounds of coordination and review with the Planning Board consultants, confirmed via email, will avoid potential changes. Further. No blasting shall occur. So what's the window for blasting? April first till? When do the bog turtles want to go to sleep? Hibernate?
Yeah, September third.
No blasting shall occur. Yes, between. So, um.
Between September.
October.
Yeah, it's October first.
Between September, September. So is it September thirtieth? And.
No, you could blast on the thirtieth, you can't blast on the October first.
Right, so between does not include that number, does not include that date.
October, October first.
But you can blast on the thirtieth.
Yes, you can.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I see. Don't blast anywhere near the first.
They don't, you usually wouldn't do.
Thirtieth and April first.
Sorry.
What?
Annually, yeah.
Annually, because I don't know when.
Or do you want to put in that it's because of the hibernation?
You don't need to say.
Okay, so further, no blasting shall occur between September thirtieth and April first, annually. Anything further than that? Okay, moving on. Project will not result, that's bothering me. The project will not result in the, quote, "creation of material conflict with the community's current plans or goals as officially approved or adopted," end quote. Six one seven point seven, subsection C, subsection one, subsection four. Soon to the Town zoning code, the project is permitted in the C O zone through approval of a special use permit and site plan from the Planning Board. The project has been designed in accordance with the site plan provisions set forth in section one forty-five dash sixty-five of the Town zoning code and the major project special permit criteria set forth in section one forty-five dash sixty-three of the Town Zone, Town zoning code. By letter dated November ten, twenty twenty-one, the Town Building Inspector determined that certain features of the project that exceeded dimensional limitations in the Town zoning law were permitted because such features were required by the twenty fourteen New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. Any members of the planning board, any questions, comments there? All right, the project will not result in, quote, "the impairment of the character or quality of important historic agricultural, architectural, or aesthetic resources or of existing community or neighborhood character," end quote. Six one seven point seven, subsection C, subsection one, subsection five. The site is located within an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites. The applicant initiated consultation on archaeology with the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, also known as O P R H P, through O P R H P's Online Cultural Resource Information System, or C R I S. An initial response was received from O P R H P on April twelve, twenty twenty-one. We're recommending a Phase One A archaeological study be completed. The applicant's consultant, T R C, prepared a Phase One archaeological study, and in a letter dated April thirteen, twenty twenty-one, O P R H P concurred that the Phase One A report recommendation that no additional archaeological work is necessary. The applicant also initiated consultation with O P R H P through C R I S related to historic architectural and aesthetic resources. Three properties were identified by O P R H P as eligible for listing in the National Register within the survey boundary in November twenty twenty-one. Following review of the site plans, the visual impact assessment prepared by the applicant's consultant, T R C, and public comments, O P R H P issued letters dated November twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, and May thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, stating that the project will not significantly detract from the character-defining features of the historic properties, and that the project will have no adverse impact upon historic or cultural resources. Planning Board and its consultants, excuse me. The Planning Board and its consultants also reviewed the visual impact assessment prepared by T R C and have concluded that the project will not result in a significant adverse visual impact when viewed from publicly accessible locations, including views of motors along Route twenty-two and Cricket Hill Road, and the view from the Dover High School Athletic Fields further north. In addition to existing vegetation along the site's northern and western perimeters to remain, in addition to existing vegetation along the site's northern and western perimeters to remain, landscaping plans included with the site plan set indicate that the applicant intends to install over two hundred and fifty new plantings, including evergreen trees, to aid in visually screening the substation's low-lying equipment when viewed from Route twenty-two and Cricket Hill Road.
So you picked up on an awkward statement. You want to say which will remain?
In addition to existing vegetation along the site's northern and western perimeters.
Which will remain.
Which will remain. Thank you. Then the rest of it. Okay. The Con Ed right-of-way to the north of the site contains the existing Con Ed three nine eight, three forty-five K V. Con Ed line, right? Line three nine eight, three forty-five K V transmission line. Infrastructure known as Line three nine eight. Okay. The project's proposed interconnection with Line three nine eight is subject to distributive environmental compatibility and public need issued by the New York State Public Service Commission pursuant to Article seven of the New York State Public Service Law. Further, future upgrades within the right-of-way to Line three nine eight pursuant to Article seven were considered in T R C's visual impact assessment, specifically the replacement of an existing eighty-five-foot lattice with a new transmission pole and the installation of one new one hundred and forty-foot-tall transmission pole to the north of the project site. Existing electric power generation, transmission, distribution uses are the predominant land uses surrounding the site. These uses include the Con Ed three forty-five K V high transmission line corridor to the north and the Cricket Valley Energy Center to the west. As demonstrated through the photo simulations of the project provided with the, with the visual impact assessment, the project's taller equipment, including lighting, lightning masks, and the on-off-site transmission line towers, proposed to connect the substation Line three nine eight to the north across Cricket Hill Road, are not considered to be out of character with the highly visible utility uses immediately adjacent to the site. The project will not utilize lighting during nighttime hours under normal operations. Lighting at night will only occur for safety and security purposes or required maintenance visits, which are infrequent. All proposed lighting will comply with applicable Town, State, and Federal standards. Okay. So at the bottom of page five, anybody have any, anybody from the planning board have any comments or questions, additions, subtractions?
Do we need anything more specific about which are infrequent?
Uh, maintenance visits.
Required maintenance, and any.
What is the expectation of maintenance visits?
Yeah, I mean, one day a week, somebody will probably go. It'll be during daytime hours. This is specific to lighting.
An hour, eight, eight hours?
Um, probably four hours.
Okay.
Just to check things out, make sure things are working.
So required maintenance visits.
So those would be more.
Approximately four hours per week.
Correct. Those would be the normal checking. If there is something wrong, then sure, it would depend on what piece of equipment needs replacing. It could be a day, it could be two days. But again, during normal business hours would be typical, unless there was an emergency. Then that's when you'd see something overnight.
Well, this.
Three to five visits in another portion. Three to five monthly visits.
Three to five.
But none are anticipated at night.
Yeah, that's. At night.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so instead of saying which are infrequent, right? Only occur for safety purposes or required maintenance visits.
It's only talking about at nighttime, right?
Yeah, this, this lighting is only for nighttime lighting. Emergent, so would it be fair to say?
And I guess it's the way, right, light, light.
Maintenance visits.
Lighting at night will only occur for safety and security purposes, which are infrequent. And what's added in there in the middle is or required maintenance visits.
Lighting at night will only occur during emergency maintenance visits? For safety and security purposes? Should those be switched? Well. Lighting at night will only occur during emergency maintenance visits for safety and security purposes. And then you can delete the rest. Because. Because.
Or required maintenance visits.
So that just comes out.
I mean, the required maintenance is going to be.
Daytime.
Is going to be daytime.
Which are infrequent.
Hopefully.
All proposed lighting will comply with applicable town, state, and federal standards. Okay, anything further up through page 5? Okay, the board and its consultants have reviewed an environmental justice response memorandum prepared by TRC and dated November 4, 2022. The board has evaluated whether the project would have impacts on environmental justice. Communities has determined that the project, one, is not within a potential environmental justice area, or PEGA, and, two, even if it were, the project will not result in any significant adverse impacts on the PEGA. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency produced environmental justice indexes. In Dover, there are three indexes under the 80th percentile: lead paint, underground storage tanks, and wastewater discharge. There's no evidence that the existing site contains contamination or pollution that will be released during construction. Site does not have any known or suspected underground tanks, and there are no structures with lead paint that will be demolished or otherwise impacted by the project. Project is a substation which does not generate electricity or emissions, and does not use water, produce wastewater, or cause traffic. There are no expected environmental impacts that would burden the community. In correspondence with the planning board's consultant, dated December 16, 2022, New York State DEC indicated that based on environmental protection agencies or EPA's mapping tool, EJ Screen, and the 2016 to 2020 American Community Survey data from the U.S. Census Bureau, the block group containing the site does not meet or exceed New York State DEC's thresholds for PEGA. The applicant has provided evidence of its community engagement efforts in addition to four public hearings held by the planning board and the opportunity to submit written comments for consideration over a five-month period. Anything further on this section? Any members of the planning board? Okay, the project will not result in, quote, "a major change in the use of either the quantity or type of energy," end quote, 617.7 subsection C, subsection 1, subsection 6. The project is an electrical substation, the purpose of which is to help control the flow of energy on the existing transmission system between the New York and New England regional power networks. The project will interconnect with the existing transmission system via new overhead 345 KV lines, tying into the Con Ed 398 line, which is an existing 345 KV electrical transmission line located immediately north of the project site in Cricket Hill Road, AKA County Route 26.
The L in line should be capitalized, sorry.
Yes. Electricity demand for the site not related to the control of transmission is estimated by the applicant to be less than 350 megawatt-hours annually. The project will connect to the existing New York State Electric and Gas, or NICEG, grid in the area of the site. Anything further there? Project will not result in, quote, "the creation of a hazard to human health," end quote, 617.7 subsection C, subsection 1, subsection 7. Project is a substation that will not generate emissions nor contribute to or increase any cumulative pollution burden in the area. Measures to be provided as part of the project's construction will ensure that no significant adverse impacts related to hazardous materials would result from site preparation and construction activities. These measures are described below. With regard to potential hazards to human health during operation of the project, the applicant met with the JH Ketchum Host Company, Towns over Fire Department, on June 9, 2022, where the site plan and project details were reviewed. Fire Department submitted a letter to the planning board dated July 19, 2022, outlining their review and comments on the project. The applicant has committed to comply with all of the fire department requests, including the understanding that an authorized representative of NY Transco shall be present when the fire department enters the fenced substation area. The FEAF and review of New York State DEC online resources indicate there are no reported spills at the site, and no portion of the site is listed on the New York State DEC Spills Incident Database or Environmental Site Remediation Database. The site has also not been the subject of corrective activities. Due to the former use of the site as a junkyard, the applicant conducted soil and groundwater sampling as part of due diligence in acquiring the site. These investigations were performed at the site in accordance with the New York State DEC DER-10 Technical Guidance for Site Investigation and Remediation, known as DER-10, and the standard industry practices. Investigations completed by TRC and TERRICON in 2021 and 2022 consisted of groundwater, I'm sorry, consisted of ground penetrating radar, or GPR, surveys, and collection of surface soil, subsurface soil, and groundwater samples from test pits, soil borings, and monitoring wells. As a result of the GPR investigation, no subsurface anomalies indicative of an underground storage tank or UST, related piping or tank graves were identified. Soil samples collected during the investigations did not identify volatile organic compounds or VOCs, or semi-volatile organic compounds, SVOCs, at concentrations above the New York State DEC Part 375 Commercial or Industrial Use Soil Cleanup Objectives, known as the Commercial/Industrial SEOs. The commercial industrial SEOs are applicable to the classification of the site as well as the proposed use further. None of the soil samples taken had detectable levels of polychlorinated biphenols, or PCBs, pesticides, herbicides, or total petroleum hydrocarbons, gasoline range organics, or TPH, GRO. Soil samples analyzed for metals, SVOCs, and total petroleum, TPHROs, did not exceed the applicable criteria for a commercial industrial use SEO. Soil samples analyzed for lead by toxicity-leaching characteristic procedure, or TCLP, also did not exceed the corresponding regulatory limit. Further investigation or remediation for lead is not required under New York State DEC standards or warranted for use of the site for the project. The soil samples collected did not exhibit characteristics of corrosivity, reactivity, or ignitability. The groundwater samples had no detectable amounts of VOCs. Based on the soil and groundwater sampling information provided to the planning board as part of the SECRE record, it can be reasonably concluded that the site is not contaminated currently, and that construction of the project in accordance with the measures proposed to address construction-related erosion and sedimentation required through Town Code Chapter 65 would serve to preclude any significant impacts related to any hazardous materials leaving the site during construction. Adherence to Chapter 65 requirements involve routine inspections by the town engineer and building inspector. As is the case with construction projects throughout the town, New York State DEC responds to reports of hazardous material releases through the state's spill response program. In the event unexpected discoveries with evidence of contamination on earth during construction of the project, the applicant must notify the town and New York State DEC. New York State DEC will then open a spill case, and the condition will be evaluated and remediated accordingly. As discussed above, in correspondence with the planning board consultant dated December 16, 2022, New York State DEC indicated that based on environmental protection agencies or EPA's mapping tool, EJ Screen, and 2016, 2020 American Community Survey data for the U.S. Census Bureau, the block group containing the site does not meet or exceed New York State DEC's threshold for potential environmental justice area, or PEGA. All right, anything on this section that any member of the planning board would like to question, comment, add, subtract? Anything? Okay, the project will not result in, quote, "a substantial change in the use or intensity of use of land, including agricultural, open space, recreational resources, or in its capacity to support existing uses," end quote, 617.7 subsection C, subsection 1, subsection 8. Site is not currently an agricultural, open space. Open space or recreational resource. The site is located in a commercial zoning district adjacent to other public utility infrastructure, including a power plant and high-transmission lines, and located on a state highway. The project will not result in, quote, "the encouraging or attracting of a large number of people to a place or places for more than a few days compared to the number of people who would come to such place absent the action." That's subsection 9. The project will not result in the creation of a material demand for other actions that would result in one of the above consequences. That's subsection 10. The project will not result in, quote, "the changes to two or more elements of the environment, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but when considered together, result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment," or subsection 11. The project will not result in, quote, "two or more related actions undertaken, funded, or approved by an agency, none of which has or would have a significant impact on the environment, but when considered cumulatively, would meet one or more of the criteria listed in." 617.7 subsection C, subsection 1, and that's subsection 12. Anything through the end of page 7? For further information, contact person. Lucky you. Shouldn't this be Marilyn? Shouldn't this be Marilyn? All right, 14. Address, town of Dover, planning board. 126 East Duncan Hill Road, Dover Plains, New York, 12522. Given the time, I might sleep here tonight, so that might be true. Telephone number, 845-832-6111. Okay. Having gone through the entirety of the document, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions, additions, subtractions at this time? I saved it during, thank you. Let me save it again, thank you. I saved it earlier.
That's when the power goes out.
I want to go through that again.
All right. Seeing no members of the planning board speaking up, about comments or questions, Attorney Polidoro, next step is what?
There's a resolution prepared.
Resolution is right here?
That's it. And so the, you know, the first few whereas clauses just outline the history of the project?
Mm-hmm.
That the planning board was lead agency, it was a coordinated review. We followed the rules for a Type 1 project.
Okay. Okay, resolution adopting a SECRE determination of significance, negative declaration, Transco Substation. Whereas the applicant, New York Transco LLC, has submitted an application for site plan, special use permit, and erosion/sediment control permit approval to construct an electric substation with transformers and. Someone's got to help me out.
Equipment.
Equipment, collectively known as a project on property located at 2238 Route 22, identified as tax process number 7061-00-698172, collectively known as the property, in the CO zoning district. And whereas public utility facility uses are permitted in the CO zoning district, subject to site plan and special use permit approval. And whereas a project is depicted on a site plan entitled Dover Station, prepared by power engineers dated June 22, 2021, last revised August 31, 2022. Sheets, DVB-E0-101, DS-1, DVB-E1-101, DVB-E1-102, DVB-C1-101, DVB-C1-102, DVB-C1-103, DVB-C1-104, DVB-C1-112, DVB-C1-113, DVB-C1-114, DVB-C1-115, DVB-C1-120, DVB-E2-110, DVB-E2-111, and DVB-E7-101, collectively known as the site plan set. And whereas, by letter dated November 10, 2021, the town building inspector determined that certain features of the project that exceeded dimensional limitations in the town zoning law were permitted because such features were required by the 2014 New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, including the requirement for a minimum of nine feet fencing around the substations with one additional foot of barbed wire and transmission poles and supports that exceed the town's height limit of 35 feet. And whereas, the applicant has submitted a full environmental assessment form, or EAF, dated September 28, 2021, revised December 3, 2021. Further revised February 6?
No, the.
That's the part 1.
Yeah, the part 1 form.
Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECRE. And whereas on October 18, 2021, the planning board classified the project as an unlisted action on the SECRE and circulated its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project to which no other agency objected. And whereas on October 30, 2021, members of the planning board conducted a site walk of the property to review existing conditions of the property and the adjoining areas. And whereas the project is located within 500 feet of New York State Route 22 and within the city of an existing Con Edison right-of-way with existing utility towers. And whereas the project is located within or adjacent to the Great Swamp, a critical environmental area, or CEA, and the planning board has conducted its review with consideration of potential impacts of the characteristics and qualities which warranted the area's designation as a CEA. And whereas, duly noticed, public hearing was opened on September 19, 2022, and continued through January 23, 2023. Something about written comments?
And we can add that in, with written comments accepted through February 1st.
Comments. Accepted through February 1, 2023. During which time the public has had the opportunity to testify, provide written comments for the planning board's consideration. And whereas, there is an extensive environmental record before the planning board, including reports prepared by the applicant's consultants, the board's consultants, and public testimony. Whereas the planning board has considered the criteria contained in 6 NYCRR 617.7 Parts 2 and 3 of the EAF, and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concern as set forth in the narrative accompanying Part 3 of the EAF. Now therefore be it resolved that for the reasons set forth in Parts 2 and 3 of the EAF and the extensive environmental record for the project which are incorporated herein, the planning board hereby issues a negative declaration determining that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. You further resolve that the secretary of the planning board is hereby directed to file a copy of the resolution with the town clerk, all interested involved agencies, and any person who has requested a copy, and to make all other filing required by law.
All right, we just, the date was not updated.
Okay, this resolution is being offered by myself, seconded by.
Second.
Members of the door. Discussion. I really can't talk anymore, so. Any members of the planning board have any for any discussion? Hello, dear. We're homes. Where's the door?
Well, I would just say that given some of the issues and questions that have been raised, not only in public comments, but also in correspondence from Husetonic Valley Association, Hudsonia, New York Energy and Climate Advocates, Sierra Clubs, Friends of the Great Swamp, and New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, I would think that a, that the DEIS would be required and that a negative declaration would not be appropriate. So I would just submit that as my opinion.
Okay, anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Member Valon?
No comments.
Okay, thank you, Member Valon. All right, I don't know if there's anything else we need to do, but vote at this time?
Vote.
All right, resolution adopting. Resolution adopting a secret determination of significance, negative declaration, Transco Substation. Secretary, please call the roll.
Uh, Member Loroberdear?
Aye.
Member Holmes?
Sorry.
Member Roman?
No.
Member Sador?
Aye.
Member Valano?
Aye.
Member Corteen?
Aye. Resolution therewith adopted 5-1 with one absence. All right. Make sure I save that.
Do you need to take a water...
Attorney Polidoro?
Do you need to take a water break? We have another resolution prepared.
The kind of water you're thinking of.
Another resolution for the board's consideration tonight? Marilyn, is this the one I sent today? Is the one I sent... It's there? Okay.
That's this one?
No, not that one. There was one today, which I updated to include... Maybe it's in the resolution file?
Well, it should be a doc, so we could edit it.
Just two docs? Oh, wait a minute. Okay, go under resolutions.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Oh, come on.
Just don't read the whole thing.
I know I read it already.
Kill me now.
Motion to take a five-minute recess. Motion made by myself, seconded by...
Second.
Member Roman. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're in recess.
Um, yeah, I mean, mine's still under the quarter.
New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, or the OPRHP, New York State Public Service Commission, I'm going to put as the ESC, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers of the USACE, and the J.H. Ketchum Host Company, Inc. And whereas the project was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239- M of the Generalist law, which responded on November 3, 2021, that it was a matter of local concern, ZR 21-320. And whereas on October 30, 2021, members of the planning board conducted a site plan, sorry, site walk of the property to review existing conditions of the property and the adjoining areas. And whereas the project is located within 500 feet of the New York State Route 22 and within the vicinity of an existing Con Ed right-of-way with existing utility towers. And whereas the project is located within or adjacent to the Great Swamp Critical Environmental Area, or CEA, the planning board has conducted its review with consideration of the potential impacts of the characteristics and qualities which warranted the area's designation as a CEA. And whereas a duly notice public hearing was opened on September 19, 2022, and continued through January 23, 2023, with written comments, with written public comments accepted until February 1, 2023, during which time the Volk has had the opportunity to testify and provide written comments for the planning board's consideration. And whereas there's an extensive record before the planning board, including reports prepared by the applicant's consultants, the board's consultants, and public testimony. And whereas in reviewing the project, the town, the planning board considered all comments and submitted documents, including, but not limited to, the following: all public comments made during the public hearings held on September 19, 2022, October 17, 2022, November 21, 2022, and January 23, 2023, and during the written comment period ending on February 1, 2023. Two applicant submissions set forth in Attachment A to this resolution, and three memorandums, letters, and testimony provided by the planning board consultants. And whereas on February 6, 2023, the planning board adopted a negative declaration determining the project, as proposed, would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
You've got an extra period there in line number three after planning board's consultants. You have period semi.
Thank you. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings pursuant to Section 145-63, subsection B of the zoning law. One, the project will comply with all land use district, overlay district, and other specific requirements of the zoning law and other applicable law, local laws and regulations, and will be consistent with the purposes of the zoning law in the land use district in which it is located. The site is 16.3 acres and zoned in the town's commercial slash industrial industry slash office mixed use, or CO zoning district. Purpose of the CO district is to, among other things, quote, "allow areas for light industrial dot-dot-dot facilities," end quote, as seen in Section 145-8, subsection A, subsection 7. The project is a permitted use in the district and does not require any variances.
Let's just say area variances.
Any area variances.
Or could you say variances?
The project will not, number two, the project will not result in excessive off-premise, off-premises noise, dust, odors, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. Sound, the planning board reviewed a sound assessment report prepared by Epsilon Associates. The report concluded that maximum sound levels from the project will comply with the nighttime limit of 50 dB-A at the property lines set forth in the Town of Dover code and meet applicable New York State DEC noise guidelines. The sound assessment was reviewed and evaluated multiple times by the town's consultants, who also confirmed that based on the studies completed to satisfy SECRE, neither New York State DEC impact thresholds nor the town property line noise level limits would be exceeded under operational conditions. Based on a review of the modeled octave band sound levels, the project will also comply with the town's guideline of avoiding disharmony with the character of the surrounding area under the modeled conditions. The board also considered sound during construction and finds that such sound is temporary and is anticipated to take approximately 12 months. Minor temporary increases in sound may occur during construction, which are typical of any project in the town. The board is also requiring a post-construction sound test to confirm that the project as constructed will operate within the town's sound limits. In coordination with the town engineer, the applicant has committed to conduct sound testing on the site after completion of construction during the commissioning stage of the project. Sound test measurement locations shall include the four receptive locations at the site property lines that are identified in the Epsilon report. The town engineer may require the applicant to include in the test no more than four additional measurement locations at the site property lines. If noncompliance with the town code is observed, the applicant shall coordinate with the town engineer to evaluate potential corrective measures to ensure no significant noise impacts to the community. Lighting, glaring, the project will not utilize exterior lighting during nighttime hours under normal operations. Lighting at night will only occur for safety and security purposes or required maintenance visits. Security emergency light fixtures and photometric analysis are identified on the site plan Anybody proposing a change to that paragraph since we changed it? We're looking at SECRE.
Pretty good.
Lighting at night will only occur for safety and security purposes or required.
You could add emergency.
Emergency maintenance.
Okay. Required emergency maintenance visits. The project will not cause illumination beyond the boundaries of the site in excess of 0.5 foot candles. Illumination along all property lines of the site will be 0.0 foot candles. Security and emergency lighting will be controlled from two three-way switches, one located at the main entrance gate and one located in the control unit. No glare is expected for the proposed equipment, but nonetheless, the facility will be substantially buffered from neighboring properties and public roads through robust landscaping as shown on the landscaping plans. Dust, odors, or solid waste, the project is an unoccupied public utility facility. It will not be staffed and will not produce odors or solid waste. Project operations will not produce any dust, and construction dust, if any, will be temporary and control measures will be implemented, such as stabilized points of entry to prevent dust and mud from being carried off-site, as well as using water for dust control as appropriate. And just as we go through this, members of the planning board, if you see something as we go through this, please bring it up as we go through this, so we don't have a bunch of amendments to this resolution at the end. Thank you. Number three, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads, considering current width, surfacing, and condition. Any improvements proposed to be made to them by the applicant. The project is an unoccupied public utility facility that will not produce or result in additional traffic to the site, or the town once constructed. Substation will be monitored remotely. For security maintenance purposes, it is expected that routine security and maintenance visits will occur, I heard, three to five times per month. Project is located on a New York State Highway Route 22, which will not be overloaded by the security maintenance visits. The project was referred to New York State DOT, which did not express any concerns about the project, including the utility work permitting for activities affecting the state highway. The applicant has also coordinated with Dutchess County DPW regarding work to be conducted on the county highway. During construction, temporary construction entrances will be located on New York State Route 22 and County Route 26, Cricket Hill Road. Trucks entering either of these temporary entrances during construction will be required to originate from the northbound or southbound lanes of New York State Route 22. Trucks exiting either of these temporary entrances during construction will be prohibited from traveling east beyond the County Route 26 or Cricket Hill Road construction entrance. Anything on number three? Okay. Number four, the project will be accessible to fire, police, and emergency, other emergency vehicles. The project will have a single permanent access drive from New York State Route 22 into the project site approximately 733 feet south of the County Route 26 Cricket Hill Road intersection, and will be accessible by emergency vehicles. The J.H. Ketchum Host Company has reviewed plans for the project and offered comments, which the applicant has addressed. The project does not propose a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreement, and therefore the project will contribute to community emergency services and will not overburden such services. The project will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal facility. The project is an unmanned substation and will not create new demand for water or produce wastewater. Stormwater will be treated on-site. Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWIP, has been prepared in accordance with GP 0-20-001, reviewed by the planning board engineer, and will be filed with New York State DEC.
Period.
Okay. Number six, the project will not materially degrade any water course or other natural resource or ecosystem, or endanger the water quality of an aquifer. The project site contains state and federal wetlands and is adjacent to the Great Swamp Critical Environmental Area. Is also located within the aquifer overlay district. No disturbance to state-regulated wetlands, 100-foot wetland adjacent areas or water bodies is proposed. The applicant consulted with USACE on the two small, isolated federal wetlands totaling 0.04 acres, with no inlet or outlet that are proposed to be filled as part of the project's construction. The site and construction methodologies were reviewed by the New York State DEC, the town engineer, and TerraCon, a national professional geotechnical environmental and construction materials engineering and testing firm. The hydro-geological analysis determined that, quote, "the planned area of disturbance on the project site is small relative to the scale of the overall system which feeds water into the Great Swamp." Accordingly, completion of the Dover Station project is not expected to have an adverse or measurable impact on aquifers or the quantity or quality of water which enters the system for the Great Swamp," end quote. New York State DEC confirmed that the applicant is proposing appropriate measures as part of the project, quote, "to avoid potential changes to the chemistry, quality, and quantity of surface and groundwater entering the adjacent wetland," end quote, from New York State DEC determination dated July 15, 2022. On March 3, 2022, the USACE issued a, issued a no permit required determination, those in quotes before, for the two small, isolated federal wetlands proposed to be filled, and the site is also not located within or near a 100-year or 500-year floodplain. In connection with the project, the planning board is requiring the applicant to remove certain existing surface debris in specific designated locations outside of the planned area of disturbance for the project on the site. The applicant worked for the New York State DEC and obtained determination with the New York State DEC to perform certain work in a manner that will not cause any adverse environmental impacts, to the extent that such debris is a source of pollutants entering the Great Swamp. Removal debris could improve water quality. Okay. Natural resources ecosystem. The site was identified as potentially containing habitat for several state and federally listed threatened endangered or special concern species, including Indiana bat, bog turtle, timber rattlesnake, fairy wand, and New England cottontail, to avoid potential impacts to Indiana bat, which have not been observed on-site. The applicant will limit tree clearing on the site to the period between October 1, October 1 through March 31. While potential bog turtle habitat was not observed on the site, the applicant has coordinated with New York State DEC to provide appropriate measures to protect bog turtles, including turtle exclusion fencing and an education and encounter plan. The closest timber rattlesnake den in the vicinity of the site is located west of New York State Route 22, and this road provides significant enough barrier that it would make it unlikely for timber rattlesnakes to be using the site. However, the applicant has prepared an education and counterplan for timber rattlesnake if needed during construction, in addition to that prepared for bog turtle. Based on surveys conducted by the applicant in coordination with New York State DEC, it was determined that the site does not contain fairy wand or habitat for the New York cottontail.
In this paragraph, should it be reiterated about the period when there would be no blasting because of bog turtle nesting?
The no blasting is, the no blasting is further down.
Oh, okay. I just thought because of the bog turtle part. Okay.
Okay. Was there something else about fairy wand? I thought I heard someone saying something.
No, you said New York cottontails.
New York cottontails. Oh, it's New England cottontail.
New England cottontail, yeah.
My apologies to the New England cottontail. All right. New England cottontail. Following several rounds of coordination and review with the planning board's consultants in New York State DEC, New York State DEC confirmed via email on July 15, 2022, that with inclusion of measures proposed by the applicant as part of the project and memorialize in the site plan set, the project will, quote, "avoid and/or minimize any direct impacts to individual bog turtles and avoid potential changes to the chemistry, quality, and quantity of surface and groundwater entering the adjacent wetland." And further, that the project does not require a Part 182 incident-to-take permit for any state-listed species," end quote. Although there is no federal nexus, i.e. funding or permitting associated with the project, the applicant coordinated with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, or USFWS. In a letter dated December 27, 2022, USFWS indicated that based on the measures noted above, no take of Indiana bat or bog turtle would occur with the project, and no further coordination with USFWS is required for the project.
Do you want to add in the same paragraph regarding that, the email from today from the NIG deck?
I don't want to.
Okay. It's your document.
Guess for a complete record, if I can find it.
There it is.
Yep.
Just paint it with this format.
Click the upper one and do a copy.
It's time robin. There you go. And it's 12. 12.
I really don't care at this point.
Yeah, it's too old school at this point.
I don't understand.
I don't know. Planning Board Secretary is going to adjust the margins here. The planning board acknowledges receipt of an email from USFWS on February 6, 2023, after the close of the public hearing questioning potential contamination from tires and debris on the site. Planning Board finds that the site's specific information provided by the applicant and reviewed by the board and its consultants, including soil testing, stormwater management features, and the debris removal plan approved by New York State DEC adequately addressed the general concern raised in the email from USFWS. Water quality of an aquifer, the project does not conflict with the aquifer overlay district provisions or its intent, and that the project does not present a risk to the quality of town water supplies or groundwater resources. Site is not located near a public water system wellhead. The project does not draw water supply and does not produce wastewater. Agricultural use is not proposed. No above-ground or underground petroleum storage tanks are proposed. The project does not involve the use of a public water supply system or the installation of a new onsite wastewater treatment system, also known as a septic system. The project includes secondary contaminant features, sorry, secondary containment features below and above the transformers proposed on the site. The applicant has prepared a SWIP and erosion sediment control, or ESC, plan to the satisfaction of the town engineer. The SWIP shows that the project will result in a reduction in peak stormwater runoff rate for each drainage area or all design storms. Erosion sediment control measures will be implemented in accordance with GP-0-20-001 and Chapter 65 of the town code. Environmental professionals completed surface and subsurface investigations, examples of soil and groundwater testing, in compliance with state and federal guidance and standards. Blasting of bedrock on a limited extent of the site will occur within 1,500 feet of residence and a critical environmental area, the Great Swamp. Blasting will be temporary and is expected to occur at a point within the site preparation phase of the project's construction, a phase that in total will last approximately four months. All blasting will be in accordance with town building code requirements, Town Code Chapter 69, and will require a permit from the town.
So is that where you're going to put in the part about the bog turtle hiatus?
That's where you're going to put it.
Yes. Seriously.
It was in the section of.
It was in red, wasn't it? It was in red.
No, keep going. It had to do, there, keep going, it's there.
Here. Yes, thank you.
There you go.
Didn't use the word turtle. Thank you. So just the further no blasting shall occur between.
Yeah.
I mean, then you can add an explanation in this section. Be hibernating.
Bog turtles from their hibernating slumber. Further, let's see, get rid of the word "further." So as to not awaken bog turtles from their hibernating slumber, no blasting shall occur between September 30th and April 1st annually. Anything further up until that point? Number seven, the project will be suitable for the property on which it is proposed, concerning the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, and hydrology, and if appropriate, its ability to be buffered or screened from neighboring properties and public roads. Project is 16.3 acres in the CO district in which utility facilities are permitted use, and is located on and accessed by New York State Route 22, a state highway. The project proposes substantial landscaped buffers along public roads and neighboring properties, including over 250 new plantings and mature 20-foot-tall evergreens along New York State Route 22 and County Route 26 Cricket Hill Road. As described within the Visual Impact Assessment, or VIA, report, the project has minimal visibility and will not cause an adverse visual impact or conflict with New York State DEC visual policy. Project leaves the northeastern corner of the site largely undisturbed, and proposes a landscaped buffer along the County Route 26 Cricket Hill Road frontage, including the preservation of existing vegetation. This vegetation buffer will be bolstered by the proposed new plantings along the northern and western portions of the site. Number eight, project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout of structures and provision of buffer areas as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. Set forth in paragraph seven above, the project includes significant plantings along Route 22 and County Route 26 Cricket Hill Road to buffer the project from public view. According to the VIA, quote, "only 1.58% of the three-mile study area will theoretically contain a view of the proposed project," end quote, and 20% of that is from the Con Edison right-of-way. Further, the VIA concludes that in the limited locations in the study area where the Dover Station project may be visible, it would be observed in conjunction with existing utility infrastructure and does not alter the character of the community. Number nine, the project will be consistent with the goal of, do we want to have a dot-dot-dot?
There were, yes, there's several goals in the finding section, but they were irrelevant to this particular project. I can pull up the code if you want me to read the full statement. Let's see. Findings. The finding is, will be consistent with the goal of concentrating retail in hamlets, avoiding strip commercial development, and buffering non-residential uses that are incompatible with residential.
Concentrating retail.
Retail uses in hamlets, avoiding strip commercial development, and buffering. Oh, you want to add them all in? Okay.
Development and buffering non-residential.
Buffering non-residential uses that are incompatible.
Residential use.
Yeah.
The board does not, does not find that the unoccupied substation is, the board does not find that the unoccupied substation is incompatible with residential use. Nonetheless, the applicant has provided significant landscaping to buffer the non-residential use. Ten, the project will not adversely affect the availability of affordable housing within the town. Eleven, the project will comply with all applicable site plan criteria. Twelve, the project is not within a residential district.
The, if you want the full finding for 12, it's if the property is in a residential district, it will have no greater overall offsite impact than would full development of the property with uses permitted by right, but not in residential district.
I think we're good. Anyone else have any comments?
It's good.
Thank you. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants the site plan approval to the project in accordance with the site plan set, and grants special use permit approval for a public utility facility to the applicant authorized as a chair or has authorized as need to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by the attorney to the planning board and town attorney of the decommissioning agreement, and evidence of recordation of same with the Dutchess County clerk. Three, approval by the town engineer, planner, and planning board attorney of post-construction noise testing protocols. Four, revision of the site, revision of the site plan set. To include a new plan sheet depicting the map of the debris removal within state-regulated wetland areas and debris removal protocols approved by the New York State DEC, as per Exhibit B of the 4/28/22 applicant submission, with a note that all debris removal will be removed prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion for the project to the approval of the town engineer.
Debris will be removed and take out removal?
All debris, with a note that all debris removal.
Okay. You can just say all.
Will be completed?
Yeah, you can take removal out. All debris will be removed. Okay.
Applicant submission with a note that all debris will be removed prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion for the project to the approval of the town engineer. Five, revision of the title sheet and sheet DVB-C1-104, the site plan set to include the following note: All construction traffic shall enter Route 26, which is Cricket Hill Road, from New York State Route 22. All construction traffic shall enter and exit Route 26 Cricket Hill Road from New York State Route 22. Is that clear? Okay. We don't want truck traffic traversing Cricket Hill Road unless it's necessary at the very beginning. Thank you. Six, revision of sheet DVB-C1-104 to require the installation of a sign prohibiting truck traffic from traveling east beyond the County Route 26 Cricket Hill Road construction entrance. Specifications for such sign shall be approved by the town engineer. Seven, submission of an affidavit by the applicant that a payment in lieu of tax agreement will not be sought within 10 years, or if so, that applicant will resubmit to the Town of Dover Planning Board for a modified SECRE evaluation. Any members of the planning board have any comments or questions on those conditions? May be further resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant erosion sediment control permit for disturbance as shown on the site plan set, subject to the following conditions: Submission of $7,500, submission of $7,500 to be placed in the escrow to cover the cost of site inspections by the planning board engineer. Submission of performance guarantee in the amount of $75,000 in form, substance, and matter of execution satisfactory to the town attorney. Be it further resolved that before the authorized official may issue a certificate of compliance, the planning board engineer shall provide the authorized official with a written statement indicating that all work authorized under the permit has been completed in accordance with the approved permit, and that all debris removal, as shown on the approved debris removal plan sheet, outside of the planned area of disturbance has occurred. This resolution is being offered by myself, seconded by Second Member Villano. Discussion. Discussion. I have nothing further to add. Member Villano?
No.
Member Roman?
No.
No. Member Sador? Member Holmes? Member La Robidere? No. Okay, seeing no further, uh, discussion. Uh, resolution granting special use permit site plan erosion sediment control permit approval, Transco Substation, Secretaryial Police Call Roll.
Member Villano?
Aye.
Member Sador?
Aye.
Member Roman?
No.
Member Holmes?
Aye.
Member La Robidere?
Aye.
Member Corteen?
Aye.
Resolution therupon adopted five zero, uh, five one with, uh, one absence. Okay, make sure I save that. Uh-oh. Might have disconnected from the network.
Do not lose that resolution.
I'm going to save it on the desktop. Disconnected from the network, so.
Just hit save.
I did, and, right, and it's disconnected from the network. So I'm just checking your desktop.
I really don't want to have to listen to this whole meeting tomorrow again.
It's right here. Okay. So, um, no further business before us with New York Transco. Correct? Thank you. Thank you. All right, our next scheduled meeting is, uh, March 6, 2023. The deadline for that is February 15, 2023. And then following that, we have a meeting on March 20, 2023, the deadline of March 1st, 2023. At the March 6th meeting, we have, uh, three public hearings, I believe.
Stony Brook.
Stony Brook, Savalo.
Oh, yeah.
And then the subdivision portion of.
Subdivision portion of.
Hubble Hill, Hope Street.
All right, seeing no further business before this planning board, I'll make a motion to adjourn, seconded by Member Holmes. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.